Okay. Um, as always, uh, this meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded. Uh, okay, we'll open the meeting at, uh, six thirty. Is anybody here for open session?
Hi.
Hi.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Shawna Larson. I live at fourteen Mount Jefferson Road in Hubbardston.
You can sit if you want.
Yes, please.
Alright, thank you. And my reason for being here tonight is to find out the steps in, um, pressing a formal complaint against the dog control personnel in this town.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we have suffered a very vicious dog attack on April the ninth. We have had contact from both Cheryl and Kim and also Marcel. Cheryl and Kim, uh, up and down, up and down on numerous phone calls swore that it was the first attack this dog had been involved in. However, um, after the twentieth, on April twenty first, Marcel called my husband to report that something had been bothering him. That he knew s- he had been at that home before and sure enough, the dog had been in a- involved in a previous attack where that particular dog had its ear ripped off and its stomach ripped open. Our dog had most of her ear ripped off, her jugular punctured, and her hindquarters ripped open. And she is recovering, but at a great expense to us. However, these dog officers did not come to see us. They did not take, um, a statement from us. In fact, their written official report is that there was no, uh, no one there, uh, no witnesses to the attack. It involved my husband and my two grandbabies who were viciously circled and nipped at for over ten minutes while he tried to bring the girls up from the bottom of our property to the safety of our home.
What kind of a dog was this?
Uh, the, the dog in question is a rescue dog who is supposedly part shepherd, part lab, and part pit bull. She's never had control over the dog in the year, year and a half that I've seen them own the dog. I have taken it upon myself to visit some of my abutting neighbors. They have all had altercations with this animal. They are all deadly afraid of this animal. They don't believe the animal belongs in our neighborhood. I will honestly tell you, I don't know if the dog is still in the neighborhood or not. I have not seen it, but they could be taking it out at a time when I'm not home. I don't know.
When was it again?
The attack was on April ninth. My dog surgery was on the eleventh. We have had communications from the twelfth of April through the twenty first of April with Cheryl and Kim and Marcel. Once Marcel stated that he remembered the dog had been involved in a previous attack. He, again, he apologized profusely. He told us that he had dropped the ball and that he, he felt very badly about it. Therefore, he was honest. He stepped to, to the plate and he tried to rectify his mistake. I do not hold him responsible, if you will. However, you do have two animal control officials who, um, I don't know if they're friendly with our neighbors, if they're protecting our neighbors, or if they know so many bad things have happened with this dog. They're trying to avoid any further retribution. However, I'm not gonna sit here and take it. So, I want-
I spoke to Shawna on Friday.
Oh, it was you and I, okay.
And I spoke to Cheryl and Kim, uh, I could get ahold of them that day. When they were going through it, it, they were under the impression it was the first attack. They went out and spoke to the dog owners and he kinda gave them a synopsis of, you know, hey, he's always on a leash and a muzzle. And, and he was complaining that your dog went into his yard. It was kind of that kinda information. And then they spoke about how Marcel remembered another incident and never reported it. And so, he's to go to the chief Perrin and discuss what needs to be done in the future. However, right now, we still have this issue here.
So, what are you, what are you looking to do?
Uh, uh, well, I, I find it hard to believe that Marcel, um, or that the dog officers perhaps are not aware of the attack. Um, that is the first person you call when you have an attack. Marcel was made aware of our attack solely by our veterinary clinic who called him to let them know and make sure. And he received photographs of our dog's injuries, just so that there was a, um, a public record of this. I, um, am waiting for the police reports from the town of Gardner, which is supposedly where Kim and/or Cheryl would have placed the information on record and I, it will be at least another seven to eight days before I see those reports. And I have asked them to research for the dog who was bitten at Nine Pine Tree Lane. His name was Debo. He was a tiny little dog and he had his ear just about ripped off and his stomach ripped open. And the people actually ended up moving away. I spoke at great length with their neighbor at Eleven Pine Tree Lane. And they were so fearful of this dog and that the dog kept repeatedly coming through the woods. They lived directly behind. Kept coming through the woods and, um, they ended up moving away. It was a rental. It was not one of the, um, uh, the other condos at the beginning of the road. So, I'm waiting to see the report-
I'm sorry, you're saying the dog was free to roam, not fenced in, et cetera, when you say coming through the woods?
I would see, yes, I would see the dog on a run in the backyard on occasion. I've seen the dog, you know, running around in the yard when the children were out. Um, I have had the dog in my yard a few times. Um, but this particular time, my husband was out with the babies and, um, that also, he, he could not be here. He couldn't get out of work in time because he had the most frightening, god awful experience with that dog nipping at a three-year-old and a six-year-old's legs. Never mind how many times it pinned our dog to the ground and ripped open her throat in front of two little ones. Um, the, the damage was extreme. Um, bad enough that I'm not getting, um, paid. The neighbors, uh, failed to pay for this surgery, the surgeries. And, um, so I have another issue there and I don't, I'm not sure how I handle that regardless. But in nineteen ninety-five, we had a dog attack and it was the selectmen who helped us finally get the dogs banished from this town. It took us a while, but we did it. And if that dog is still living next door with the fowlers, then I want it, I want it out. And I can bring in my neighbors that I spoke with and they are all more than happy to come and sit with you and tell you of their own experiences with this dog, the lack of control they have on this, with this dog, and the fearfulness of the neighbors. And he is a very big, big, big dog. He's not a tiny little thing. So, that is why I'm here tonight.
Okay, okay.
Well, let's, let's get together with, uh, Rayanne and the animal control people, Chief Perrin, we'll get the Gardner, um, report and we can make a plan from there.
Yes, please. Yes, 'cause I, I do want the pine tree report as well. Um, again, um, Marcel, I, I left a message saying that I'd like a copy of his report, but I'm also following up with, um, the Gardner police to get that.
Can when you get the report from the Gardner police, if you could send it to me?
I most certainly will.
Yeah, I would appreciate it. It would be great.
As far as getting, uh, y- your expenses, is that something that might be, uh, a small claims court type?
Well-
You might look into that.
They've already passed bad checks. They refuse to answer phone calls. Um, and I know if I take them to small claims court, which is probably what I, I would at least try to do, they probably still won't pay and nothing will happen to them, so I'll be out of pocket for that e- experience as well. And there's just no recourse for some, you know, a bill that's gonna be well over one thousand dollars.
Frustrating.
So, there you have it.
Okay.
I'll contact you as soon as, I'd like to have the report before we call everybody in, so as soon as that report comes in, I'll get in contact with you through your schedule or something.
Okay.
Sorry, this happened to you.
Yeah, hope the dog recovers.
Uh, uh, we're hoping. She's fourteen years old, less or, she's just a little old lab lady.
Mine's thirteen-year-old lab, same thing.
There you go. There you go. So, picture her throat ripped open. It, it was god awful. Thank you very much, everyone. Enjoy your evening.
Anyone else here for open session?
Am I considered open, Tim?
You can be open if you want.
Yeah, I'm open. Yeah, my name is Marty Elwitz, five New Templeton Road here in Hubbardston. And the reason I'm here is to address a culvert, the town, uh, constructed approximately five, six years ago on my, uh, uh, property, uh, lot. Uh, there was no easement on our deed. Uh, the first question when I, uh, approached the selectman Anita was, is the culvert physically on your property? And I have Zoc surveyors did a survey of this. You guys can make a call, a real detail that it will show it's literally three and a half feet on our property. The detail will be-
Gardner Road.
Yeah, the detail will be in there. It's literally three and a half feet on our property. Um, again, there's no easement, there's no flow on the deed. I have, before they constructed this, the ru- the water on the high side of New Templeton Road went under three driveways. It flowed north down New Templeton Road under three dra- driveways. Uh, and then there was culverts down by Bob Hayes's. There was a couple culverts down Bob Hayes's. As a matter of fact, I went over to Bob Hayes and Keith told me, uh, the town was, um, I was talking to him. And he told him about a couple culverts, frost heaves, if you will, which were the culverts. Those were replaced also. And there was a bunch of other culverts farther down, not in my neighborhood. I brought Bob up to the culvert that I'm talking about and he had no knowledge of it. He goes, "I, I, this is not the one I was talking about." He had no knowledge of it. Um, and like I said before, uh, it would be a pretty simple procedure. I guess Dan, uh, uh, the former superintendent says, well, maybe there was a pipe underground, um, that was blocked, so you couldn't see it, it wasn't flowing. Uh, does the town have any records of that?
Right, no. Let me, let me go just inform these guys a little bit more, 'cause we've had some-
We, we know what's going on.
So, um, I, I met with Tim and Marty down at his house last week sometime. Uh, we've had a couple of conversations about it as well. And as part of the town's due diligence, uh, that, uh, uh, Tim had talked to a few different people, one of them being Bob A. Senior, uh, who, 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 we've got some differing reports now, um, as well as Lynn Gauthier, who said that, um, during that work, no, we don't have any records, but during that work, only replacement in kind was done. Only replacements were done, not in kind, I guess, but only replacements, which, there's several of these culverts that go down the road. And so, it was sort of the prep work for the, 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 so that's where, that's what Marty was just getting to there with the sort of he said, that's the situation.
Right, exactly. There's no records, there's no easement, there's no flow. When Bob Hayes bought his property, there was a flow showed on his deed from sixty-eight going through his property. So, there's no de- uh, deed, no flow on this property, no existing one. Uh, that's a he said, she said. If the town doesn't have records, I can't see how, like I said, this can be resolved pretty easily. You just float the next culvert sewer, if you will. Um, Cut Catch Basin is about a hundred fifty feet down New Templeton Road. Run the pipe, run the pipe, send it into the culvert. It's on MDC land and everybody's happy. Because I'm willing to go to court. I know Zoc said, "That's a sixty thousand dollar lot. They're flooding. They're making it a wetland." And, um-
So, uh, just to, to, to paint the full picture here, so Lynn had said, I believe, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, is he had said that, and again, this is just, just so we have the whole, whole story of, of what everyone's saying, uh, was that during the work, um, there, there had been, it's an old system, so there may have been something, there may have actually been a culvert there that was plugged that was never, never seeing flow. Could've been decades where it's never seen flow. Again, we don't have any record of that. That's just making sure we have all the information here. Um, and, you know, we, when we were out there, his surveyors had just completed and I know it's sort of hard to say.
Yeah, I was gonna add, MDC owns the lot next to it, which is only about fifty feet. A, the engineers and the, uh, superintendent didn't look at the maps and they just assumed, uh, where they put my culvert was MDC land. It's the next stone wall.
Your opinion?
That's just an opinion. That, you know, I'm just speculating. Or B, if the water comes off sixty-eight, instead of running it under the first driveway, it's more efficient just to bring it straight across. I agree with that, but it's not right, you know? They could've just run a pipe under Barbara Bright, Blyther, Blythers, one pipe. There was a pipe there before and the next sewer down is a hundred feet from there. It's simple to be resolved. That's what I'm asking.
So, right, and we wanna, you know, come to a resolution on this. We're, we're not interested in getting any sort of protracted legal battles, my God. So, what the current situation is, is this is the, uh, you know, paved apron and here's the roadway. This is a blow up of this. Um, and then the road line, stone wall, which is, you know, technically where we can put the culvert. The head wall sticks over it by two and a half, three feet.
Three, three and a half feet.
We saw the flagging, something like that, three and a half feet.
Yeah, about that. I agree with that.
About that. So, we, we are illegally on his property. I would say that, that's one known right there is that, at that point. Now, our options are to, what, figure something out. Our options are to remove the head wall and the pipe to that point, pull it back to the line, let it continue to come, or whatever else anyone could think. I'm just presenting the whole case. That, these are the options that we have with us. Um, one of the, the, the things that, you know, I had mentioned, and I know Tim had mentioned too, is, um, it, it, uh, adding flow in another direction is just an unknown of what that can receive. So, this, this was put into place with a certain amount of footage of pipe that would go into, uh, culvert and then another one downstream, then another one downstream. That was based on certain volumes, right? So, now we're changing that. If, you know, we change it.
For a hundred years, it was, it was the form of-
That's, that's the other side of it. Again, I'm just playing, just talking about it all.
They just did it because it was convenient and probably more efficient, granted, I'll say that, but it wasn't right.
All I was getting at was that if we'd made a decision to, to sort of abandon that existing culvert, we would just have to know the fact that we are sort of ignoring a calculation that potentially would need to be made, whether or not we need to or not.
You have three, four culverts down there. They can all catch it.
Maybe. I'm just letting the board know that that's a decision that they would, that would have to be, uh, have to be made.
If this was plugged to begin with, right?
We don't know.
No, there's not, there's no record, there's no flow. The, that's a, a he said, she said.
There's a problem though, is that the, the, the swell that's on that side of the road now, so the depression where the water can flow into is probably a lot smaller than it used to be though. Now that the road's been redone, it's pretty tight up to the banking there, so the capacity of that swell, who knows? That's all I'm saying is it's an unknown from our position, you know? We are illegally on the property here. Um, as far as the other stuff, it's sort of an unknown. And if we're kind of okay with that, um, we're okay with it as a, as a decision.
I know, I know when they put in the original, Lynn had set in the culverts prior to paving that. He wanted them in, uh, six or eight months prior to that. Um, I don't think a whole heck of a lot of engineering went into that because shortly after that, probably a month before paving, we had like torrential rain and he ended up changing two of the pipes because they wouldn't handle the water. So, as for the original engineering that went into that, I don't think there was a lot that went into it. I think it was just, let's put this size pipe in and it'll handle it and that's that. But two of them didn't at the time, shortly before paving, 'cause then they dug it up-
Yep.
And, and redid it.
Understood, Ed, but now it's an existing condition, you know, modification to that, you know, may or may not make the town liable for making a change without the proper due diligence. Again, I don't necessarily fully believe that, but, um, that's just something we have to consider. Um, what, what, Tim, can I bring you in on this? What would it take to abandon the existing culvert that's there, the one we're talking about here, and head down, make the water head down to the next point that it would discharge?
You'd have to go down to the next culvert, which is the next driveway down. And I would believe you should pipe it down to that point from the Catch Basin down to the next Catch Basin instead of letting it run on the surface of the water like this gentleman here is describing. Because if you get ice melt up or freeze, 'cause as Dan said, the ditch line is not what the ditch line used to be. So, it's not gonna take the capacity of the water. And I'm not, I'm not sure if there's some sub drainage in there or not that we wouldn't wanna be, if we were to go down through it and then we're gonna have a logistics problem going down that ditch line. There's two telephone poles in the middle of that ditch line as well as six trees that would have to come down.
All right, if you come up and see where the water comes off sixty-eight-
Yeah, around the corner there, right?
Yep, comes off sixty-eight and flows down, that's a bunch of crap. Because there's, there's trees there, there's telephone pairs, poles there. You can dig a culvert, you put it with crush rock. I see no flow. That's what you're making a big deal about it.
When you say, when you say culvert, do you mean a stone swell?
Stone, stone.
So, not pipe, is what you're saying?
I, I, it comes off of sixty-eight with stone, not a pipe there. It flows beautifully, right next to a, uh, telephone pole. Uh, a tree, like he was saying, oh, that tree's in the way, that tree. You're making a big deal about it. It's not a big deal. You make a trench, fill it with stone. It's been that way for years. He making a, that's, that's how I look at it.
Right, except for the-
I haven't seen any water overflowing, you know, over the stones or creating ice havoc or any of that.
The, the biggest concern is, I think for me anyway, and, and you guys haven't seen it, but biggest concern for me is the capacity of the swell. You know, it's just, and I'm, I'm not saying it's a deal breaker. I'm just saying that's a concern for me because it's definitely tight in some places. But, but again, it was bigger. It had more volume to that swell. It could take more water. It's, it's pretty small in some places now. I, I'm not saying against it, I'm just saying the decision we make, you know?
Can't they make that swell larger?
It goes into, right, tight bankings right there and then you've got the road. It's pretty, we should, we should-
When you say swell, you're saying the gully.
Yeah, the side of the road.
The side of the road.
Side of the road. So, we could take a look. I mean, I, you know, n- necessarily know if we're gonna be able to decide anything tonight here, but if we wanna sort of schedule another little visit out there to take a look.
I'd be happy to go out there and look at it.
I think you've, you've-
You know, I was talking to the old lady Barbara Blyther. She's about a hundred years old, nice lady. And, uh, 'cause I was working in that lot and I introduced myself to her and I, and she goes, "Oh, yeah, Marty. You've been in the woods for thirty years and I first met you, you know, first time I've met you."
Yeah.
And I said, "No, Barbara, I've met you before." She don't remember. Her sister was with her. But anyways, I said, "Barbara, you remember there was a pipe under your driveway?" She goes, "Yeah, they took it off, took it away."
Yeah.
You know, and then, like I said, Bob, the problem with Bob is he was talking about the heaves down by his neck of the woods.
Yeah.
His driveway, there's two down there. And that's what he was complaining about. And when I brought him up to mine, he said, "I have no knowledge of that. I never even go that way." He goes off sixty-eight and, you know?
I mean, I don't think there's any, any, uh, argument that we can't have a culvert pipe on your property with no easement. I mean, that's, that's not, that's not the issue. It's just-
Well, you're flooding the lot. You just do what you want?
No, he's on your side.
On your side. So, don't argue with me when I'm not trying to argue with you.
It sounded like you didn't, there's no big deal with the culvert being there illegal.
No, he's saying it was a big deal.
I said that no one's disagreeing with you that having this culvert on your lot is, is not the right thing to do. We don't have an easement.
But I also just don't wanna rush into, um, well, we'll just cut it off and put a pipe in here and do that
because we could run into problems with the road. So, I would say give us some time to figure out the proper-
Yes, that's, uh, understand.
The proper solution, um, to get this piped or piped or swaled wherever it needs to go.
Yeah, that's a reason.
And then we'll work on it.
Okay. That sounds reasonable. Can, can you give me some kind of time? You know, just, uh, uh, one month, two months, six months, a year, ten, ten years, you know, just something. We, you know, my, I've been in Hubbardston for forty years, okay? I've been, uh, for the last thirty years, I've sponsored Little League teams, I'm a major sponsor of the Hubbardston Road Race. I've been a good citizen for Hubbardston, um, you know, so.
Well, we're coming to the summer construction season, so, I mean, hopefully we can, you know, come up with a solution and get this worked out by the end of the summer.
Yeah, that, that's reasonable because we do, my daughter's at the age now, we're, we are thinking, you know, we're developing. We wanna build her a home and my granddaughter there. And as it is, it's being flooded and turned into a well-in. So, we have all the information and see what we can come up-
Maybe we'll all go out so we understand, you've seen it, but, you know, we'll all go out and see what we're looking at.
All right, great. Do you guys want a copy of that?
Yes, yes.
Yep, me too.
Can you make a copy?
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, I'll get it.
Great, guys. Thank you so much.
Uh-
Sorry, sorry.
Anyone else here for open session?
How do you do?
Hi.
My name is Mark Cattistow. I represent the, the family. We, we have some, uh, a deposit for an earth removal application some years ago. And we would like to know what we have to do to square this up with the town to get our money back.
Pete, you just explain, just explain to Michael, he's, they, they've got a, uh, he's coming in regarding a deposit for an earth removal permit from forever ago?
Yeah, from nineteen eighty-eight.
Um, so what do you, what are you, what are you asking? Give me my money?
Uh, basically. I mean, you can write off the check if you want.
Wha- wha- what is, what's the, just give us a little history. What, what do you-
Well, we had a clay removal on, uh, twenty-five acres of land.
On where?
Right, here.
Sixty-eight?
South of town, just south of town, quarter of a mile.
Yeah.
And we, we started excavating and, uh, thr- five years went by or whatever and they wanted to have it renewed. And we paid for the renewal, but we never got the renewal in the mail, so I don't know if the permit's still good for us or what.
Have we done research into this?
Just scratching the surface. The bond definitely has not been returned, but I'm still looking to see if the pit was actually closed.
Okay.
So, just need to look at it.
So, it sounds to me like there's a few conditions we need to find out about first-
Right.
Before we can get to the check cutting phase. Um, so I guess-
I'll take a look into it.
Rayanne's gonna look into it?
And also-
How much is it?
What's that, ten thousand?
Ten thousand.
Plus interest.
Yeah, plus interest.
Thanks for your contribution.
The secretary, so. And there was also the question about, uh, the hundred dollars that was sent in for the renewal. Does that mean that the renewal was updated or they just kept a hundred?
I don't know.
I'll have to see if the renewal actually went through and maybe it was just lost in the mail, so that'll be another thing I'll have to look into.
This is from nineteen eighty-eight?
That was in two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five.
And the other date was ninety-eight?
Well, it, it, it's, it started in eighty-eight and, and we ran up until ninety-nine or two thousand. And then we went for a renewal, but they took the money, but we never got the renewal, so.
So, what, we're dealing with some other pit issues, uh, right now in town, so we've done a fair amount of research into our bylaws and all that. So, there are conditions on release of funds based on pit closure and that sort of other thing, so that's the sort of stuff we'll be looking into.
Now, who, who will be coming down to visit?
I don't know that, I don't know that we need to visit. I think we, we're looking into the paperwork that we have here in town-
All right.
And what the conditions are for it.
All right.
And I think Rayanne will be working on that.
A lot of this, I think, usually falls into the planning board too.
Well, it, it's the planning board's decision now, isn't it?
It is currently, if it's pit, if it's closed or not, it comes into the planning board.
Right.
So, that's the, the, the paperwork we'll be looking into.
All right.
I think the first thing they had to decide was, was it closed? Did you get the renewal from there?
Exactly. I mean, i- if the renewal's there, that's fine with us. I could, uh, actually, instead of going through the, you still have to go through the planning board to renew it though, right? But if it's still in effect, do I still go through you people from the original agreement with you, the selectmen?
Funny you should ask.
Well-
That's the question before us with another pit right now, so.
Right now, so, um-
Let's get some more information first.
Yeah, okay.
Let's get some more information, then we'll-
Yeah, I don't know who has the authority, you know, planning board or you people.
We don't either, for real. But no, you, you're obviously, you're, you're on the agenda now, you know, so you're, are on the, the radar for us now. We'll start looking into this.
So, uh, we can come back?
I'll contact you as soon as I have any information. I'll let you know and if it goes on our future agenda, I'll make sure you know the date.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here for open session? No? Okay.
All right, first up, we have Tim Kehart, DPDW director, to go over a couple items that he's been working on and will be working on.
Hey, Tim.
Hello. How you doing?
How you doing, Tim?
Good. Which one do you want to start with first?
Uh, first one, here's the listing. I have chapter ninety projects.
Chapter ninety first, okay. All right. Okay, uh, just to update the board is, uh, we're doing the, uh, chapter ninety work that, uh, we had talked about, we given, talked to you guys before about a three-year plan that we had worked on. Um, we're still, we're still, uh, working towards that.
This is, just sorry to interrupt. This was the sheet that we had that showed like fiscal year sixteen, then the expenditure, yes, okay.
So, we're pretty much looking, still mo- looking to move forward with what we had on that. And, uh, the thing we have now is, uh, with the type of, the winter storms that we had this year with the free star and the warm cold weather and the rain and then followed by plow and snow a couple days later, we also did some damage to some roads. Uh, you guys already know that we did a mile and a half of Pine Crest last year and we tore up some more of it this year. So, I'm looking to use some money over in Pine Crest to hold together, 'cause I was gonna do another section of Pine Crest, not this coming year, but the next construction season, as we had talked about in the three-year plan. Um, we're gonna have to go out there and do a Band-Aid to hold together to get to next year.
Can you, um-
Relating to about a hundred thousand dollars.
Send to us or, or Rayanne or something, the, the specific plan of which roads that's gonna be?
Yeah, I have, the list is right here on the sheet that I'm gonna be asking for you guys to sign tonight. And, uh, that one there is, uh, portions of Cheyenne, Muskogee, Seminole, Shawnee Way, Iroquois, and a portion of Twin Hill Road.
'Cause we got some flack last year, uh, s- uh, based on the, not necessarily the product, but what the rhyme and reason- But what the rhyme and reason was for doing what was done.
We were doing the ones that were torn up.
I know that's the explanation, but I think, um.
I think the, the, the most complaint was why was there strip of asphalt put right down the center?
We ran out of money.
And nothing else was done.
I could have not done it at all and I probably wouldn't have got in trouble, but I, we had, we had a little bit of extra, so I thought a little something was better than nothing.
I agree, I knew what it was right off the bat, so.
We ran out of.
All I'm saying is that, it, just inform us on what the plan is.
Well, we've got, we've got sections of it and part of it with this chapter ninety is you have to do at least five hundred linear feet in sections. So you can't just go out and do small little patches, you have to do at least five hundred feet as part of the requirements of chapter ninety. So these sections are all very length, various, uh, lengths, uh, I can tell you, I've got them written down here. Twin Hill, there's two sections, one's eleven hundred and fifty feet, another one's six hundred feet. Uh, Iroquois is the top half of Iroquois, the, the far end of it, that's five hundred and sixty feet of that. There's nine, nine hundred and fifty feet on Cheyenne. Uh, Seminole is eighteen hundred and sixty-five feet. Uh, Chickapie is a thousand foot section and Shawnee is pretty much the whole thing, five hundred and eighty feet. So it's gonna turn out to be just shy of five thousand linear feet. Uh, and what it's gonna be is what we did on Pinecrest last year is we did a leveling coat followed by an inch and a half overlay, so you had two layers. All this is gonna be is that bottom leveling coat to hold the road together. And then next year to go back, finish the leveling coat, or the plan is to go back next year. Finish the leveling coat and then put the inch and a half top over everything that needs to be done on these same roads.
How, how many feet of roads that you resurfaced last year in Pinecrest were damaged this year?
Nothing, nothing that we paved last year got damaged, this is all stuff, cause I had Pinecrest set up in three phases. Because I knew there's six miles of road over there, so we did twenty-five percent of it last year. This year, we're gonna do some more, we wanted to do some more two years from now and then we'd set up a phase three going forward. Because obviously, I needed nine hundred thousand dollars to do everything and I, I don't.
How did, how did those repairs hold up this winter?
Excellent, and they actually, they plowed very well, they melted off very well, actually, they, they, uh, they melted faster than the. Than the oil and stone roads, and that was from, uh, the mechanic Travis, that's his plow route. So he said that they, you know, they, they held up well, they did well and, you know, so that's, we're just making progress. I mean, there's a lot of bad roads in town, I don't, I don't need to tell anybody here that.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm working on it, trying to make the money go as far as I can. Twin Hill is another road, I mean, basically, all the places that we've gone out where the guys have done. The hot mix patching where we go out and get ten tons in a truckload and do it ourselves and spread it out by hand. The two areas that we've been doing is we've been working on Pinecrest since I've been here and the other big place is time, is Twin Hill. So that's why there's two sections on Twin Hill that we wanna go over because it's beyond to the point of. Going out there and putting out ten tons and trying to spread it and hold it together, we need to go out and do those two stretches there that I add up to seventeen hundred and fifty feet. So basically, it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars to do the leveling coat of the areas that I listed to you guys. Over on, uh, Pinecrest area on those roads that I listed off and another twenty-five thousand dollars over on Twin Hill. For those two sections on that for a total of, of a hundred and twenty-five. The reason that we're able to do this is because we're gonna actually have some leftover money from the bridge when we get done with the Hillville Road Bridge. So if we didn't have that money coming back from the Hillville Road Bridge, we wouldn't have the, uh, funds to do this at all.
How is the bridge coming on?
Uh, the bridge is they poured the footings and then they poured last Friday, they poured the walls. They were stripping off the walls today, Rayanne came down with me today, I gave her a tour of it. Um, and their plan is to either tomorrow or possibly Wednesday, putting down the laminated bridge, uh, components. Um, and then right now, Friday will be the first, what they call curing test of the concrete, they have to test it for strength. Um, so that'll be the seven-day test, they'll do another one the following Friday. And they do that until it meets the requirements of the strength test and then they can move forward. So right now, their plan is to put the components down, build the back walls, pour the back walls. Then do all the back fill around, get everything ready, get the guard rail system put on, that's gonna be put on.
What's that look like?
Uh, it's timber.
Right.
And then the en- ends are gonna be, uh, galvanized steel. And after that's done and it meets all the curing tests, then they can go over and pave it. They can't pave it till they get the, uh, cure test because they can't put any weight on the, on the abutments in the bridge. So they have to wait for that, so basically, it's gonna look like you can drive over the bridge, but you can't until they pave it.
And what are we doing about aprons?
They're gonna do the, the whole thing that's gonna be all blended in with the new pavement.
Yeah, that's right, like some, I think I've heard a distance before, there's some specific distance on each way that it's gonna be coming up, as far as paving?
They're just gonna pave to what they chopped off and, and they did all the elevations because they brought it all the way down. So they shot their, they shot their lines and center line and all that and benchmarks. So they'll bring it back up to grade, so it's all, all supposed to be just a, a smooth transition.
Yeah.
So. So basically, the first one is for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and that's for, uh, those roads that I listed there. Um, the other, the other one, um, is the one that I talked to you guys before is Old Princeton Road and George Howard Road. And that's gonna be from the intersection of, uh, Hillville, Simon Hill. Going all the way out to George Howard where the pavement ends and it turns to dirt, and then it's gonna go down George Howard. Go down to the railroad tracks and, and, and repave that and all that, but we're gonna actually go over the railroad tracks. And grind up to that farmhouse at the end, but we're not gonna repave from the railroad tracks, we're gonna turn that into a gravel road. Cause it's gonna be like sixty thousand dollars to pave that. So we, I can't spend sixty thousand dollars when I've got other roads, I've spoken to the homeowner out there. She's aware, she says, a gravel road will be better than what I'm driving on now. So for about forty-two hundred dollars, I can reclaim it and turn it back to a dirt road. So that's, that's the plan there, um, and to do all that. Uh, that's gonna be a full deck reclamation with, uh, three inches of new asphalt on the road. And that total cost is two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. So that pretty much will use up our chapter ninety money that we have available for now. And, and will keep us on track with what we have scheduled for next year, barring any, any unforeseen expenses or problems that crop up. Or anything like that, or, or winter damage next year that is, uh, from, from the winter plowing operations or whatever.
Where was Flag Road on that list, just because we had that complaint from the campground, right?
Right, and we put that on the next, uh, meeting agenda.
We did.
We also received another complaint from that street today.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's other roads, just to give you guys an idea, I've, I've got, just to give you an idea how far behind we are. I've, I've got some other numbers here, I mean, Flag Road, that's, that's a road that has. The, the road's not, you can't just go over there and level it and, and, and put in more asphalt on it, that's gonna be another, you gotta grind it all up again. You're looking at about two hundred grand for that road alone. Uh, you take a look at Twin Hill, when, uh, I got, we got the complaint on Twin Hill Road, I went out and looked at it, saw what we did for winter damage on it. Um, I've been out and looked at Flag Road as well, Twin Hill Road is in worse condition, I mean, to go out there, that's another road that needs to be ground up. And that's only the half of the road that wasn't paved a few years ago, however, however long the part towards Berry Road was paved. This is only half of the road and that's two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, I get complaints on Adams Road on a pretty regular basis, that's another hundred and fifteen thousand dollar job. And this is, this is just pavement, this is not replaying culverts, this is not pulling the shoulders, this is not police details. This is just to actually go out and do the work without any prep work or any timeframe of getting anything prepped.
Just can keep chipping away, doing as much as we can.
And the other thing you guys, just so, you know, we looked here at Elm Street, um, that, that right there is somewhere between three quarters of a million and a million dollars. Believe it or not, I don't know how it can be that.
Stretch of Elm Street?
With between Parsons Road, Berry Road, cutoff and Elm Street to do those three sections altogether. And that was an estimate that was engineered by the town or had it, had engineered as of January oh nine. And I don't think those plans are gonna stand up because of the new stormwater regulations, I don't think those, th- those drainage plans will stand up to the new regs. So I think it's gonna have to be re-engineered to go forward and Anita and I figure that's gonna raise it to closer to a million. That's just a guesstimate on my part. So, and High Bridge, we, we had a complaint on High Bridge, just what, yesterday or last Friday or something?
Friday.
So we got a complaint on High Bridge, so there's another, another piece of road that's another hundred and seventeen thousand dollars down by Burton's Camp. And going out to the dead end out there towards the railroad tracks and, and there again, that's another whole thing down there where the culverts down there all need to be evaluated. And decide what needs to be replaced and that's a whole wetlands issue.
That's part of the bumpy way, I take it the girls from gymnastics, so they don't want you to touch it.
So I mean, there's, there's a lot of things out there, we're trying, we're trying to get as much stuff done, I'm trying to tackle the things and trying to prioritize. Um, with the money that we have and, uh, you know, that's, that's what it comes down to is. We need more money and we're, we're trying to get it and we, another couple things we'll discuss here later on, you guys will hear about the update on, uh. On, uh, the strap grant.
Alright, so what are we gonna, what are we gonna do here?
Next thing is the strap grant.
What do you want them to, I need them to sign.
Oh, watch.
If, if they approve them.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the chapter ninety submissions as, as submitted.
Second emotion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the first, why don't we start with the chair, you gotta sign the first page and then the entire board signs page three. So right where I got the, no, on the, where, where does it say, chair?
You're sticky, it's, not, not a well-placed sticky.
No, you're right, right there where he is. And then on page three, on page three, it's on the left-hand side, that's what's confusing, when you get to page three, it's on the left, that's. One place is on the left, one place is on the right, so. Alright, while you guys are doing that, I'll give you guys an update, the, uh, the strap grant, we've awarded the strap grant to Mass Broken Stone. In the amount of six hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, the price came in, uh, the price of the asphalt came in a much lower than what we'd estimated the project yet. Cause when we put together the project with the estimates, prices were a lot higher at that time. Um, I've actually spoken to the contract, uh, the guy that does the contract for us to get this project moving forward, starting July first. And when Anita and I met with him before, after we were awarded the grant. He said that if the grant, if the prices came in, you could look to doing additional work as an amendment. To the original strap grant project, if it was something in the neighborhood, like you wanted to go out, you had a spot that needed a little pavement or something like that. That you needed to go out and get a little asphalt done, so I spoke with the gentleman and, uh, talked with him about a couple options that we had out there. And he says, oh, those would be great options, option number one was to go out there, we did not do a twenty-two hundred foot section of Grimes Road. In two thousand thirteen before you get to the swamp.
So we don't, we don't have to be contiguous then with the rest of the work as part of the grant?
It has to be in the neighborhood, he, you know, we can't just jump up and go across town because we need money, that's not how it works. Yeah, good try, I already tried that, doesn't work. Um, so basically, he said if it was contingent to the neighborhood that we were working with and would improve the neighborhood. That would be something that they wouldn't have a problem to, to us to do it, so I talked to him about Grimes Road because we didn't do that twenty-two hundred feet over there. And then the other slot was to do a portion of High Bridge Road. And that beginning part was gonna be a leveling and an overlay anyways from Old Westminster Road. And if you know what I'm talking about, you start, you go down and then you get to that really wide curve. And then you, then it gets right up there and it narrows right down where that water comes in on the right-hand side before Burton's Camp.
Yep.
So if you guys know where I'm talking about, I'm talking about going up to just before where that strictures down.
Okay.
Because that's where it gets really rough, a- as you're aware. Um, because beyond that, now we're getting into whole wetlands issues, all them culverts down there should probably be replaced, that road may need to be.
Anything we can do on that road.
Brought up, so that would be, Grimes Road is twenty-two hundred feet, um, and, uh.
High Bridge.
High Bridge is twenty-seven hundred feet. So the goal is to go out there, do a leveling coat like in Pinecrest with an inch and a half overlay. And we're gonna, I've actually gone out and I've dig saved those, that property out there, those two roads, so that we can go out and pull the shoulders. Get the shoulders down, get everything prepped up like we did for Old Westminster Road. So the project is scheduled to go forward, we've talked with the guy, he said to go ahead, we actually added. Those into the pre-qualification form to go to them, cause they haven't actually officially awarded us a contract yet. Cause it won't be effective July first. So he said, go for it, put it in there, so the plan is right now that these are in there pending, we don't have a problem and we don't go over on the money. So we will be able to get that additional forty-nine hundred feet of road paved under the, the strap grant that we, that we've been awarded.
Okay.
So when, when do you anticipate, um, Old Westminster starting, the work starting on there?
Uh, right now, we're penciled in for early July. Um, we got the, I've got the, uh, waddle company scheduled to come in July first and they'll finish on July fifth, cause Monday's the holiday. Uh, that's a two-day job they estimate and then, uh, right now, the Mass Broken Stone, we're on, we're penciled in for like the sixth, seventh.
We're self-performing a portion or, or construction managing, I guess we call it, a certain portion of it that wasn't put in the, the main contract to avoid additional markups? So it's a few different.
Yeah, we did the straw waddles, I did it myself instead of hiring the general contractor to go out and do the straw waddles, so instead of paying a premium to have somebody else do it. I brokered the deal because it was between the ten thousand and twenty-five thousand dollar estimate was what we had with conservation. And we knew what the, the average price of the waddles were, price is eighteen thousand dollars, so we're, we're well within the calling of three quotes, I got my three quotes, I follow procurement law. So if I was gonna go over twenty-five thousand, then we would have had to central register it anyway, so I wouldn't, would have just left that on the contractor. But I was trying to make this project work where I wouldn't have any overages and it would come in under budget and it came in well under budget. Based on the estimates, I mean, the, the asphalt price came in at sixty-four dollars and fifty cents installed. Right now, I'm paying sixty-four dollars to go buy it myself and bring it home and put it down myself. So that just gives you an idea, the price of the asphalt right now, and it's all, it's all tied to the oil price. And right now, oil's way down, so that's not a surprise. So that's the update on that.
Okay.
And, uh. Yes, uh, the, uh, we bought a brand-new mower for the cemetery, uh, for the cemetery and we brought the old mower. Up to the recreation field and, uh, so now that means the recreation field's mower, the zero-turn John Deere. It's, uh, we think it's a two thousand one, we're not sure, but it's a, it's not a commercial-grade mower, it's not a professional-grade mower. It's a, uh, you know, homeowner special, whatever you wanna call it, doesn't have a flexible deck on it and whatnot. So we were asking the board to surplus that so we can get, get rid of that one. And we brought the old mower up from the cemetery that we'll use up there, um, and that one's in much better condition. The other problem with this surplus mower is it was like a one-year model and getting parts for it when we've needed to get parts for it is rather difficult. Even also John Deere, I never would have thought we couldn't get parts for John Deere, but. And I've talked with, uh, Sandra and she said, she was under the understanding that the town purchased the mower with, with taxpayer funds, so. That wasn't something that was bought under donations or anything, so I did check with Sandra.
Yeah, let's make a motion to surplus the mower.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 And I guess the only other thing is that, the, the thing on the W P I?
Yeah, we have a contract with W P I, we just need to have it approved, uh, retroactive to the twentieth, that's when Dan signed it.
So the contract is, they get paid six hundred dollars?
Yeah, they, they've, what we've done is there's a six hundred dollar pot for them to, and we have to give them fifty percent upfront. And that's just, uh, materials and, and, uh, and, yeah. Materials and if they need to make like plans or anything like that, to go to the land office to make copies and, and pay for them in mileage. So they, they agree the six hundred dollars should be enough to cover what they need for the, uh, for the project, so. We'll have to give them a three hundred dollar check after July one and they understand it won't come until after July.
Let me just give a quick update, Tim and I met the, uh, the two students, I didn't update anybody out here yet on this, right? Uh, a week and a half ago, maybe, um, they picked us, we were thrilled that they picked us, the Town Center Committee to, uh. To do their seven-week, um, capstone project when they come back starting in August. They were super eager, ones from California, ones from Macedonia. Um, one of them, uh, during his last seven-week, uh, uh, class, if you wanna call it that. Was doing a walkability, uh, planning study in Hong Kong to get walk, you know, along the, uh, the waterfront. So they're both, uh, engineers, but they're both in the sort of planning portion of their, um, majors. And so it's an excellent duo to have part of, um, part of our, our committee. And the thing is, is, you know, uh, we had a Town Center Committee the other night and went through it all, you know, we have a responsibility too. Cause these, these kids are sixteen to twenty hours a week for this project. That's a lot of hours, so we've gathered all sorts of information, we're just gonna flood them with stuff to, to do research on regulations and other studies done and all that, so. That's where that stands.
Yeah, and the, and the nice thing about it was the kids, I think they're gonna complement each other, the two students that we have and the, and the advisor was here as well. And we walked the entire length of the road with them, Dan and I did. And, uh, you know, the, and I didn't realize this, but talking with the, the advisor, she says, you know, transportation, a lot of them are doing the water and sewer. You know, that, the, that infrastructure and engineering and, and she sat there and says, usually there's only three or four transportation. Teams that go out and get picked out of the seventy students, there's not that many that do transportation. So that even made me feel better that they actually picked us because there aren't many of them out there to be had.
They're gonna do a lot of.
They're gonna do a lot of base work for the town, for, for very little money and save us a lot of money and I think it's a, a real win-win for the town and for the students as well.
That's great.
So, I think it's a great program and they're, um, this all came from the Mass Highway Association is how we learned about it and they wanna hear about it. Cause they wanna hear this, you know, this proposed success story, so this may go beyond to our, our Worcester County Highway Association. And they wanna hear how this falls out because they said that's great, that something that we learned in class is actually being put to fruition, so they're pretty excited about that down at the, down at the board.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the six hundred dollars?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Or can you just do it retroactive to the twentieth, if you can amend that?
Oh wait, no, it wasn't six hundred dollars, right, it was to approve the contract.
Prove the contract.
Alright, so I'm gonna amend that, so, uh, six, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the contract with W P I.
Retro to the twentieth.
April twentieth.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Can we make sure we send a big thank you to the state for the.
Can we make sure we send a big thank you to the state for the bridge, by the way, too?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is that it, anything else?
Nope, thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have Dr. Mari Marshall and Cheryl Duvall, here to discuss the Public Health School District request for a proposition to happen.
Thank you for taking the time to, to meet with us this evening. I know we don't bring to you good news, um, uh, Cheryl, do you wanna walk through some of the preliminary numbers, and so that they can potentially understand our, our circumstance and um, what we're trying to accomplish?
Do you have any extra copies?
I do, I do, I think I have one for each of you, and even one for the, your aunt. Good, and what next to you, I think?
This is similar to a document that I provided for the school committee at our last meeting, but this particular document, they have not seen yet. Uh, because our meeting is tomorrow night, but these, the calculations were updated using the House Ways and Means budget revenues that came in, we got a little bit more from the state, very, very little more from the state. Uh, so the numbers are a little different than you'd see in minutes from the previous meeting. What the school committee asked us to do was take a look at our FY seventeen preliminary budget, which is in the top second box from the left. Says FY seventeen preliminary of thirty-six million, five eighty-eight, six forty-one. And what would those assessments be like, and compare it to budget figures of the previous year?
I think we should note also that the preliminary budget for FY um, seventeen was one that was de- developed based upon. Uh, the school committee's efforts to say, okay, what have we lost in the last number of years, what, what do you really need? To get your technology to a point where our kids can take on, online state, high-stakes testing, what, what do you need? What, what class sizes, you have thirties and thirty-ones in some of the elementary schools, what do you, what do you really need? So you see that thirteen point eight, when we told them what we really need, I mean, of course, that was not the budget that we had any expectation of coming to communities with. Uh, certainly you see those assessments, and the assessments always are double or more because of the fact that the um, uh, state no longer provides us with additional chapter seventy-eight. Of any significance, because we have declining enrollments, and chapter seventy is based on head count. So if your head count stays the same, your chapter seventy stays the same, if it declines, they hold you what they call safe harmless. And your chapter seventy stays at a particular level, our chapter seventy has been primarily frozen for, I don't know, probably eight, nine years. And so what happens is, any increase in our budget, we used to be sixty-five percent funded by the state, now we're about forty-four. Because we're there just holding us harmless, and even though our special education costs, our energy costs, our health insurance costs continue to increase. Uh, there is no additional revenues provided for the district, so any real substantive increases in our, our budgets. Sadly, pushed across the table to the local communities, and it's been, I know, a, a difficult for local communities.
So, just so we, so I can understand this, so where it says FY seventeen preliminary.
Right.
Where it says Hubbard City, and that's a one, almost a one-point-two-million-dollar increase for our assessment.
Well, we know, no, see.
This is, this is, option A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J.
We're, we're, we're down about option third, cutting three million dollars from that.
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
Um, yeah, if they could just.
Trust me, we, we certainly understand.
So again, if you look in that first box, opposite the town names. You'll see that that was the preliminary budget of four-point-four-million-dollar increase, or thirteen-point-eight percent, and yes, those would be the assessments. What Dr. Marshall was trying to say was, because there's no increase in revenue from the state. No increase of reserves being used by the district, because there are none, uh, the increases would be that in assessments to the member town.
Just dumbing it down a little bit, is that the wish list? Is that what you guys would call it?
No, I hate that, that's a four-letter word.
Okay.
It's not a wish list, it's a needs budget, it's a five-letter word.
Because we don't know as much as you guys do about this, would we call it that?
You would, you would, I hope you would call it, this is what would, would put us on a par, okay? With the kind of education children who live east of four ninety-five have on a regular basis, that's what this would do. We're very realistic about the fact that we're gonna have thirties and thirty-fives and so forth in our class sizes, because that's basically what we can afford. We understand fully that the drivers of our budget, and as we're working on our five-year plan, the drivers of our budget are special education costs. Well, it used to be, I could come in here and talk, say, energy, I can't even say energy anymore, is uh, certainly, if, uh, special education far and away outpaces. Um, any, any other drivers in our budget, health insurance and special education. You realize that the foundation committee met, and they acknowledged that they have underfunded for years since nineteen ninety-three. Special education costs in all of the communities, as well as healthcare costs, but they don't have any money, so, too bad, so sad.
So when special education goes up. It's not, revenue doesn't go up?
I cannibalize the rest of the budget, to, to take care of chapter, uh, I, those, those costs in special education.
And for example, if you could just give us an idea of how much this year, does special ed go up?
One-point-seven-five million, for next year.
For next year, right.
One-point-seven-five million, or twenty-six percent.
I'm special, special ed alone. So we're at a point where we've, we've, are actually below level funding for all the rest of the budget. The only increase we really end up having, is we, cause we have to pay it, is special education at one-point-seven.
Now, what, what's the driver of the increase in special ed, is it the more special ed kids being identified, is it more?
No, I would say more medically fragile children that make it into our system. Who require very, very expensive out-of-district placements. We have several students, for example, in long-term pediatric care facilities residential, they're two in three-hundred-thousand-dollar placements. Um, we've got two, um, the, the little guy, and I, I'm not telling you anything you can't read in the newspaper, but a little guy. Who was abused by his family, uh, his dad's in jail, they've lived in our district, the dad lived in our district, that little guy is in a long-term pediatric care facility. Because of abuse, and he is our special ed kid.
Now, ten years ago, that would've been a healthy human services placement, these days, it's an educational placement.
So, so, and, and please understand that in no way do we believe that, that, that these services aren't deserved and warranted and so on, it's just that. I can't control them, and I can't predict them. Um, I could wake up tomorrow morning and the special ed director could come near my office, and I kinda go like this when she's near, near me, and she could say, we had two move-outs. And some other superintendent is hearing, they had move-ins. So if the family moves, uh, otherwise they're, through their twenty-second birthday, there, there would be our placements. And, we also have a lot of social, emotional issues that are, uh, sort of rolling into our schools. Where we have very young children who are very, very difficult to control, and some of those students have one-on-one behavior specialists working with them. And I don't come up with the idea that they should have these services, that's by a team of individuals, you're probably very aware of. A team of individuals where the psychologist, where there's often pediatricians there, they sit down, they have a great big team meeting. Uh, pa- the parents are the ones who ultimately though, can say, no, we're not doing that, or yes, we are. And if they say no, and the team says yes, we can go to court and, you know, kinda fight it out, first go through hearing processes, and we do that on occasion. But this year has just been one of those situations where. We've had a twenty-six percent increase in that particular cost center, and, and, and what we're, what we've done and what we're doing. Is we're cutting every other thing out of the regular day budget. Um, and. That's not your problem, that's sort of my problem, I guess, but what we're hopeful about is that we've cut two-point-five-million dollars at the, um, out of the rest of the budget.
Can I add one more thing to what Dr. Statter asked? In addition to those types of things that Morn is talking about, the Commissioner of Education has allowed continually. Increases in tuition rates for these out-of-district placements to the tune of two to ten percent. And then says to the superintendent at a meeting, well, who did that?
And one of the superintendents, that you did, Mr. Commissioner.
So he, he has the authority to raise tuitions to the Stetson Home, to the, to the.
New England Center for Autism.
All of these out, out-of-district private placements, he increases the tuition, but we get no increase in chapter seventy-eight to help pay for that increase.
We do have a, a, a situation called Circuit Breaker, do you wanna try to explain to them? That's a reimbursement, if you get a very, very high placement, the, there's a certain percentage, if the state funds it. That they will help the district after the fact.
In the days when I worked at another district, so fifteen years ago, the reimbursement for special education costs were fifty-fifty. So if a student went to a hundred-thousand-dollar placement, the state would pay fifty percent of the tuition, the district would pay fifty percent of the tuition. All of a sudden, the legislators thought of this great word called Circuit Breaker. And you were gonna gain money this way, because not only did you get a reimbursement on students who are out-of-district placements. But also those students that worked in your, were in your district that got special education services. However, they built into the formula, an inflation, inflationary factor. So it's four times the cost of foundations, so if you look at the average spending of the state.
For special ed?
No, the average, the average foundation.
Per pupil?
Per pupil, so the average for the state, times four. That's the minimum that the district has to spend on every student in special education before Circuit Breaker even starts. And then dollar one over that threshold, they'll pay anywhere between, so far, sixty to eighty percent, subject to appropriation. So what they did actually, was put out of the market, all of the in-district students, because nobody reached that forty-eight-thousand-dollar level of services if they're in district. And a certain number, all of our collaborative placements, which we have several, they don't make meet that threshold either. So, instead of us gaining money, we actually lost money. But we don't know until the budget is finalized, what that percentage reimbursement will be.
And it's subject to A, you know, nine-C cuts, which have been visited upon the Circuit Breaker on a regular basis. So our, our cost to s- to just transport about fifty of our special needs children to various placements. And also, some children that can't ride a big yellow bus because of their disability, who are, you know, take special vans. It costs us over a million dollars to move those fifty students around, it costs us a little over a million dollars to move all the rest of the students around. So between transportation costs, because obviously, if it's not a residential placement, we have a child at Crotchet Mountain. The parent insists that that child be brought back and forth every day. It's, I mean, it's just.
That's in Vermont, New Hampshire.
And so the tr- the transportation component is not Circuit Breaker eligible. So our transportation for special ed is just a, an outright cost, there's no reimbursement like you would get for regional transportation to big, to bring the big yellow bus, you know. From someplace.
There's, there's no, there's nothing at the state level to say that, to somehow. Rain that in, that we have to pay transportation for one student to go from the Coben District to Crotchet Mountain, New Hampshire, and then come back again?
Parents, if, if the parents, if that's what the parents want, and we can't do through hearing. Um, demonstrate that that is an inappropriate placement, uh, based upon what the team, you know, has evaluated that students' needs, it is what it is. We wish there was a state board that would oversee very expensive placements. Um, the town of Shrewsbury, and I, and granted, we're certainly not the town of Shrewsbury. Um, they just got four, four-hundred-thousand-dollar placements. And I was at the same meeting with the commissioner, that the superintendent from, um, Shrewsbury was, and he said. Four-hundred thousand, what could they possibly be doing? It doesn't matter, they're, most of them are hospital placements and are very expensive. Um, so, the, the problem we have is that, um, we have more and more students who enter our schools. Having of sometimes a one-on-one nurse. Um, for example, in Harbiston Elementary School, because we belong to the collaborative that rents some space there, and we have some students in that, uh, Kelly Day, uh, placements, I don't know if you've ever. We have five nurses in that one classroom, in addition to the nurse that, you know, supports the rest of the students in Harbiston. Um, we, we belong to the CAPS, uh, collaborative, we belong to the FLAC collaborative, where districts try to get together and create programs off-site. So that they're cheaper than if we have to send our students down to the Boston Newton area, but that's where some of those expensive placements are, the Perkins School, the New England Center for Autism. Uh, Coting School, um, and the, some of, some of the students need those very specific programs that are, you know, are available in those, uh, those particular placements.
Um, Perkins Center for the Blind.
Yep, um, so at, so at any rate, we're not alone, this is a very typical problem in school districts. Um, I'm not alone, meeting with selectmen, I will tell you that, whether you're at Narragansett, whether you're in Wachusett, whether, whatever. Coben also has recently, about three years ago, gotten what they call a group home for adjudicated offenders. Um, that, which is part of the Seven Hills Foundation, which is located now in the town of Barry, almost across from the post office, almost. Maybe I could throw a stone there from the high school, they are high school age for the most part. They are students who are wards of the state, adjudicated offenders through, uh, and felons, uh, through the, through the, through the system. And most of the time, their risk assessment is so grave, that we can't, we can't have them in our school. So our sped director spends a good deal of time, our attorney has to also be in attendance at all those hearings. And we get zero from the state on this, these are state kids who are from DCF. They can be from, um, Boston, um, you know.
Chelsea.
Haverhill, Chelsea, Quincy, they're not necessarily from very close around here. And they're obviously ineligible to attend their own schools, so obviously, we say, wait a minute, if they can't attend Quincy High School, why should I think they could attend ours?
Because legally, they're considered residents of Barry.
Because they sleep in Barry, so.
Are, are the increases, um.
All of the above.
No, um, the, the special ed increases, are, are they, are they annual and predictable?
This is very, very unusual to have this level of increase in a special education line item. I mean, we always have some increases, but usually they come and they go, a little bit more than, wouldn't you say, Cheryl, than what, what we've seen this year?
The contracted service line, this current school year, is significantly over budget right now. Going to the committee on Thursday for a transfer from other areas in regular education. To cover the contracted services that are necessary for our social and emotional students that Dr. Marshall spoke of earlier.
Those would be OTPT, um, uh, behavior specialists and those sorts of things, uh, adjustment counselors, special group, um, therapy sessions for the students.
So really, going forward, Dan, it's, it's the contracted services that are necessary, as well as the tuitions for out-of-district placements that have caused this one-point-seven-million-dollar increase.
Okay.
So this is unusual, that you see this level of increase, it's not unusual to see consist, you know, consistent increases. Uh, but I have to say, this is, this is something that's overwhelmed us, um, and, and we can't fix it, I can't say, well, we just won't do this.
And this year, we have had several move-ins after the first of July. Um, if they move in from July one to April one, we own the cost. If they move in after April one, we know we don't own the cost.
We can back build it.
We can back build the other district, they all moved in before April one.
Yeah. Um, so it, so.
There's a sign somewhere that says, special ed student moved to Barry.
Well, you know, I, I, I would say that, except I know that Wachusett, which has this mammoth group home with a similar population, at Deveraux School. Um, has, you know, Nishoba has one at, it's a RFK School, I believe. Um, they have this, because sadly, some of these very broken children, who are now fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, who have. Been, you know, offended, you know, sexually, have sexual offenders, they're fire starters, they're, they're kids that we can't really manage well within the, within our, within our catchment. If we are fortunate enough, after a lot of administrative time and lawyer money, we end up being able to back-bill it to wherever they came from. But in the interim, while we have the student who arrives, we have to do the risk assessment, we have to go through all of the, the testing. And in the time that they are there, we must provide them with tutoring. Because we can't bring them on-site, because we don't have a risk assessment, so for thirty dollars an hour, we have to, and then we often go and we say, are they taking MCAS with us? Because we have to go over and give them MCAS, and of course, I don't know what kind of educational background they have, and how, and how shall we say, motivated they may be. So those zeros on our MCAS scores are things that, you know, cause on accountability, we worry about those. So they, they had a twenty-four bed, uh, with, that was approved, they've now been approved to a thirty-bed, and they are full. And, um, so we're just hoping there is not additional opportunities to add more students there. We just don't have the administrative capacity without adding, and in our preliminary budget, we had added a portion of a, another special ed sort of administrative type. Cause the paperwork in special ed is enormous. So, we, 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 we have a couple that we're servicing on campus, um, with safety plans and so forth, but those are challenging as well.
Alright, so where, where are we at?
We're, we are at, I'm looking at, okay, the assessments that are under the, uh, two-million-five-hundred-thousand-dollar cut. So sending you a, sort of an assessment of forty-five-hundred. Um, sixty-three, I'm sorry, four-million-five-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-four.
An increase of thirteen percent from last year.
And seeking, um, a million-dollar override.
District-wide.
District-wide, which your share would be two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. So that we would look for, um. A, a vote, ob- obviously, you know how you would like to structure that, we would assume it would be sort of X dollars with a contingent amount, you know, contingent on an override.
Well, we've got a, uh.
I know.
I gotta do it. Uh, you know, we've got, you know, a budget discussion later on, uh, which involves, you know, significantly cutting town hours, level funding, um, across the board. Um, we, we, uh, we're, we're like everybody else, so, um. Where do things stand, uh, related to, and again, I'm on the, the, the task force, um, uh, where do things stand with m- major, um.
Consolidation?
Consolidations and/or movement of students coming into this fiscal year, just.
I would say, based upon what. I would say based upon what I hear from the folks there, they want more due diligence, looking at the, um, Community Compact Grant that. They, you know, really loo- looking more carefully at demographics, really having more conversations about that. There's no question that that is, you know, um, difficult for us because we know that there's some monies there that we could save. We know it would be unpopular, but we would need to go through town meetings and we're probably at a, at a juncture now where it would, where we could do it logistically. But I would suspect when you look at the regional agreement, we, we don't have enough days unless they, you know, unless the town's overwhelmingly said, go ahead, Maureen, do it.
That was kind of the root of my question is that we're, we can't, it, it, you know, there's excellent discussions going on within that group, you know.
They're very resistant to, well, I would tell you Hardwick, I don't know if, if you hear the Hardwick contingent, they are absolutely. New Braintree sent me a letter before we finished our first meeting and said, we'll never do anything. Um, hopefully they're, they're, they're looking a little differently now that we're looking at the budget.
Yep.
Um, Barry's just sort of sitting there saying, just tell us what, what we're supposed to do.
I think you were at the last meeting, right?
Yep.
They were unwilling to take a vote. The task force was unwilling to take a vote amongst themselves.
No, that was two meetings ago then, cause I was at the last one. We didn't have, that was two meetings ago, but I didn't know that.
Yeah, there's like no vote to be taken and I'm a little nervous. We all got the email from Rayanne the other day. She's underwhelmed, I left your word, underwhelmed by the consultant.
Yeah.
And their ability to get that, that work done by the deadline that the task force needs, which is next day, December, in order to move forward for next year, um.
See, I'm, I'm of a mind that if we had the opportunity to work with communities, they would understand this and I think we would consolidate. But there is such, there is such a love for the school and Hardwick. I mean, that, the, there's a faction of, I just don't think we'll ever close the school in Hardwick. And New Braintree feels that they're being victimized because they're little.
Yep.
Um, so we, we, we just have to get beyond that and, um, God knows the, we're, we're, we're talking about it and it is, it is a way to address. The sad thing is, we will do all of that to fix just the sped problem and nothing good will happen for the rest of the kids, um, quickly. Um, we will be able to at least put the finger in the dike, but it will be very hard. Cutting two, two and a half million dollars out of this budget is, is challenging. But cutting if we had to, three and a half million dollars out of the budget and still funding a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in new sped costs is just.
Well, that, that's the question that's gonna come up. If you can just, let me throw us out there then, do it, do what you want with it. But the, the question that's gonna come up is what specifically is affected by that million dollars?
Everything.
That's not something that we can convey.
Yeah, well, I can certainly, uh, give you an example of what, uh, of, of the things that we're talking about. And the concern that I have, obviously, is the school committee hasn't had, taken any votes to say, we'll cut this, we'll cut that. Obviously, there'll be at least one person from every core subject area at the high school, okay, lose their job. We probably have eighteen different, um.
Eighteen FTEs.
Eighteen FTEs will be laid off. So it'll impact, um, you know, certainly our music, our art, our pr-. Obviously, the elective programs will take a bigger hit because the core is essential. Um, and so some of the things that we just pride ourselves on, um, we will have to figure out a way to, um, not let all of them go. The committee has to decide, do they want me to just load up those classes and try to hold on to programming, figuring we can get to, to consolidation? Which would be a year from now. Uh, that won't, that will be very large classes, but we'll have, we'll have, you know, they'll be in. Maybe some of the electives that they want, but they'll be mega, they'll be huge. Um, well, I have all my contracts open next year and I have consolidation potentially. I have a potential of stabilizing, I think. If I don't get overrun by special needs, um, concerns. Um, but this year I don't have my contracts open. The consolidation looks a year away. Uh, if, you know, if, if we didn't, we hadn't had this huge thing of, um, sped coming in, we could, we could have made it. I mean, it wouldn't have been, you know, pretty, but we could have made it.
Unfortunately, I don't know if you know our situation with Monty Tech this year?
It's up, uh, considerably higher.
Hundred grand.
Wow. Yeah.
Which, which is.
I know.
Interesting, you know, note to get. So, um, so you're here tonight to present the scenarios you guys have been working on?
Mm-hmm.
And I guess for us to discuss what to do at town meeting.
Well, b- basically, obviously, it's, it's, it, this is, once the ball is, is in your court, whether or not you would approve the opportunity to put, um, uh, you know. An override on and for your portion, which would be, you know, two hundred and fifty-two thousand. And as hard as it would be for me to even, you know, fantasize that we could pass it in Harborsin, I have to pass it in three other towns in addition to Harborsin. So it will be a ve- big, big challenge for us.
Can you let us know what, what, what are the other towns?
Uh, yes, I can. Uh, the town of Barry, their override portion would be three hundred and eighty-one thousand, twenty-one dollars. The town of New Braintree would be sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The town of Hardwick would be one hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. The town of Oakham, one hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, all based, uh, on enrollments.
Yep.
Um, so there is no question, you know, you look at New Braintree and go, oh, we wish ours was just sixty-eight, but of course their budget is, you know, is, is different. We do have the impact on tax rates. Did you bring that with you?
No, I didn't.
We do have the percent, and we just get that using the calculator from the Department of Revenue, which we assume sort of has the right numbers. Um, and Barry, it, it, there's nothing that's over a dollar here. In fact, it's under a dollar, significantly under a dollar in some of the towns.
What unknowns are there still on your side as far as state funding or anything else that?
Oh, it's still very much unknown state funding because it, what the House has put in scares me on transportation because the Senate has to agree with that. So the Sen- Senate budget isn't out yet. The House budget just came out on April tw- twenty-something. Um, the state budget ha- Senate budget has to come out and then if they don't agree, it's gonna go to conference committee. We may not know until June what real estate revenues are. Which is, which is how it has been for a number of, a number of years. So those are definitely up in the air. Um.
Revenue prediction, projections have in, in, in the winter did not meet, you know, benchmarks, what, what they thought they were gonna be able to have access to. Um, the Senate obviously will have the best look at revenues and what they, they tend to, they tend to be a little more generous in regional transportation, the Senate. Um, the best thing that has happened for us is if Stan Rosenberg, western part of the state, all with his regions, is the president of the Senate. I spend more time thinking and talking to, to, uh, Senator Rosenberg and rep- and Senator Goby. I mean, the Senate, re- and of course, you know, probably people don't like to hear this, but, uh, Stan Rosenberg is the only one right now who's saying. We have a revenue problem supporting schools. You can't say to the schools, the whole formula is bad. We haven't funded, uh, you know, health insurance and we haven't funded, um, our special education programs the way they should be. But we're not doing that anyway. How do you say that to, you know, I mean, certainly it's, it's, it's a very, very tough thing. I'm also involved in the u- in the urban, in the rural schools coalition, which is a recent kind of thing that has emerged, especially from the western part of the state. Because we are burdened with, um, land in lieu of taxes that they don't really pay us anything for. So we have been whining and complaining about that because sort of only your town that suffers with that, Peter Sambarry, uh, Harborsin, I mean Hardwick. Um, and certainly the western part of the state.
And there's this suburban coalition as well. I don't know how, if you guys know what that is, but we recently added, there's ninety communities or something who have gotten together. Select boards and different finance committees add to that as well.
Well, that, and, and when, and when they tell me about, oh, the per-urban problems, well, if you had all the, all the colleges and churches that we have in Boston. You wouldn't be complaining. I said, really? Because if on our land, we could have thousands of students who buy lots of stuff. Who, who eat, drink and be merry and buy retail, I would much rather that than just a bunch of pretty trees, cause that really doesn't help us at all. So they do get some revenues back and the, all of the universities except one, who they wouldn't tell us which, when it was. Paid considerable amounts of, um, you know, re- uh, uh, revenues in, in lieu of taxes. So. I know the churches don't, but anyway, I think Boston has a tax basis a little more lucrative than ours, so we do continue to complain. Um, we also, uh, Cheryl and I are both involved in Mass Association of Regional Schools and I, and I do represent them at the state level. Um, in, in our efforts to ensure that we get our transportation and so on and so forth. So. We do anything and everything we can to be as active as we can in the political sphere. Um, but everywhere you go, it's basically the same money. Everybody wants, as the, you know, gentleman was trying to. Bake really good roads, but nobody really wants to pay for them and everybody wants safe bridges, but we don't pay for those. And, um, I'm just praying that we wanna pay enough for schools to, um, just keep us going.
Alright, well, we appreciate you coming in.
I know you don't, but thank you for saying it.
And we'll, uh, we'll be discussing this.
Okay, well, you know, I know, I know it's a heavy lift. I, I certainly do acknowledge it's a very heavy lift.
Okay.
And if you, um, after, after tomorrow night, when we meet with the committee, cause I, I just don't feel it's appropriate for me to roll up the cuts. Without first having a conversation with the school committee. So we will be, have, we have a meeting tomorrow night, we have a meeting again on Thursday night. Um, and the assessments will be finalized at that point. They could pick, you know, four million, tell me to cut four million. Then I think we just, I don't know. We're gonna, we're, we are gonna look at busing in Harborsin. We do, we do have the capacity to cut a bus in Harborsin. If we cut that bus, I, I'm gonna tell you, the, the, the ride will be in excess of an hour. But, but we only have thirty-six kids on it and we have enough, so we're gonna cut a bus in Harborsin. You'll get the calls, I'm sure you will. I know that you and I've worked on some stops before. You'll get the call, but we just can't. We're also gonna ask parents, if they continuously bring their child to and from school and they never use the bus. If they would sign it and say that to me, I could potentially rebus some of the district, cause we have so many parents who drop off and pick up kids.
And if we, and if we don't have ridership seventy-five percent capacity, you lose the reimbursement on the bus.
And we don't get reimbursed for the kids who are a mile, less than a mile and, mile and a half from the school.
You have to be very careful when you, when the ridership goes down that level that you may not get reimbursement on that bus.
Yeah, so we, we have to be cautious about that. We could, and you know, some regions have done this and it certainly would be just a disaster. To say anybody a mile and a half from the school will get no transportation. You and I both know how ugly that would be. We. I wouldn't want kids walking up Brigham Road for love no money and with snowbanks. I mean. And I don't know if any of you get on Route thirty-two and say, we'll walk all the kids from Gilbertville, or that I could have all the Coben kids, just picture that. Walking from the center of the town down to the high school, three abreast, of course, four abreast on most days. So we know that, um, the police would just be screaming at us, but we're at a point where, um, we feel it's in, in the, in the best interest of their safety. That we pick them up because it's really dangerous on, on our roads. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I will see you in a couple weeks.
Yes.
This week and a half.
I know. Thank you.
All the budget financing gets glazed over over there. I don't think that's a good sign.
And it gets even better. Okay, so the next item is, we have a couple of two thousands sixteen budget shortfalls. Uh, however, I've got some good news today. So initially, there's two, and I'll go into the easier one first. We have a veteran firefighter leaving and so federal law dis- dictates that we have to pay out all the remaining vacation days that he has.
Mm-hmm.
And that's fourteen days. The union contract dictates that we must pay half of his remaining sick days. He has fifty-three.
Oh.
So it comes up to about nine thousand dollars. Uh, right now, approximately six thousand dollars can be supported in the sixteen budget with the wages with him gone and. Couple of things on call time. The other three thousand, Bob said, they might come out of call wages or training wages. The only thing is, is if it's, they have some kind of high level calls.
Yep.
That will go down. So if it can't be completely funded with the budget that they have. They said that, that he may need a reserve fund transfer, but it would only be about a thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Which is much cheaper than what we thought it was gonna be before.
Okay.
On the other side, we have Rutland Dispatch. Their shortfall is twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. It's a combination of staffing level issues and also they were counting on getting a grant to pay for the director's sal- uh, salary. Which is about seventy-nine thousand and they didn't get the grant. And so I'd like to try to pay this in sixteen because I don't think that the budget for seventeen would support it. And so.
How much is that in terms for our, our share?
That is our share. It's actually a hundred and nine thousand dollars shortfall. Our share is twenty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, Rayanne, I forgot to ask, uh, the, the, the grant for the director's salary, which director was that?
That's Nick. Which I, if you have any further questions, I would certainly call and they can ask him to come to a Finkon meeting. He'll, he'll definitely come and, and answer any questions you have.
Okay.
Uh, I talked to Chief Perrin today. He says he may have between ten and fifteen thousand to use depending on any vacation and sick payouts that he would have. Was still gonna have a reserve fund transfer, uh, anywhere between ninety-five hundred to fourteen thousand.
Okay.
So that's gonna be a big hit.
I'm really disciplined with the Rutland Regional Dispatch. I think we need to think about looking at another regional dispatch. The costs keep rising. I didn't realize that they were counting on grants to fund their director. That's, that's bad fiscal management.
First year, going into seventeen is gonna be the first year where they're not gonna count on grants. But unfortunately, they learned the hard way that you don't do that.
Well.
So we have kind of put a couple of feelers out to see if there'd be other towns that are willing to regionalize. So we are starting some talks.
How do you manage that relationship?
What do you mean?
Meaning we might have been aware of this problem a little earlier than just being presented with it now.
We didn't even get the bill. We were supposed to get a bill by March thirty-first. We had to remind him at this Friday meeting. You haven't sent us an invoice yet. So it's.
Since we're a member, uh, do, do we have any observation rights at meetings? Do we participate at any budget level of co- conversations? So that, that's what I mean when I say, how do, if we participate in this, how do we manage our participation?
The, the police chief, so it's a better conversation probably for Dennis, cause Dennis is our representative to the Regional Dispatch Center.
Okay.
But we've never had budget, um, direct budget.
Input.
You know, input, that's a, sort of looking for, input into their budget.
Right, but, but we're expected to write check.
We're expected to write a check.
So.
They are gonna start having, they are gonna start having quarterly meetings. They sent that out to us. Uh, which is something that Chief Perrin had asked for last week. And so at least we'll have that now.
But we've been regionalized for years and I never knew until just now that, I mean, I knew there was a director on a salary. I didn't know that the salary is dependent on getting a grant every year. I mean, that's just, that's such poor fiscal management.
It is. Yeah. So if you'd like to look into alternatives. Part of our agreement is that if you are gonna leave the dispatch, you need to give a hundred and eighty-day notice. So if you wanted to do it for the following year, you would have to let them know by October.
Okay. And there are feelers out, as you said.
There are a couple feelers out.
Cause a couple of years ago Holden, I think it was Holden in Princeton was interested in regionalizing. Cause Holden was regionalizing with somebody else and we wanted to know if we were interested in that.
I know Paxton's interested in Westminster. There are a couple of them.
Okay. I guess, I guess I would just add though that we could, we could move to different towns and then still. End up with a director who does not have a firm grip on budgeting. And again, I'm gonna ask, what are we going to do differently in our relationship and arrangement and agreement? So that we're not caught unawares again.
Okay. Okay. Um, Rayanne, I'm gonna change around the order a little bit.
Okay, sure.
To, to sort of limit the amount of torture we have to put you through there.
I'm a former school committee rep. I felt, I feel your pain. I used to do it on this side, so I felt her pain. I was kinda like, oh, I know.
Well, anyway, we'll, we'll move you up the agenda?
I, I, I don't have much. I just wanna just.
That's, I know you don't.
I, I'm gonna stick around and see about the warrant articles too, so, you know, if, is that what you were doing next?
Uh.
To see if they went through, I just.
Pretty, pretty soon.
So I just throw my thing out there and then I'll sit back down and we'll hear some budgets. I hear your woes, so, um. So I just, quick and dirty, I just, I feel like our gravel pit, um, was officially closed, um, and, uh, the exact year. The records are going back and forth right now. At planning board the other night, they, they made reference to how scattered the record, record keeping was and that, you know, there's really no. We have, um, documents that say we requested that our gravel pit be placed in unused land. I'm not sure the direct. The com- uh, when the, you, there's no use of the land and it changed our class, our tax status. Um, so we feel like our gravel pit, the proposal that we'd like to bring forward is a new use. And we'd like to bring it forward, in, uh, according to the attorney, we'd like to bring it forward to Larry Brant, that, uh, town's building inspector. And because of the publicity that it's garnered and the amount of attention that the, we'd like to do it in some way, shape or form, so that there's a public. Hearing, a public, not, I don't wanna use the word hearing. I think the first phase would be a public, um, session, like what we're doing here, so people can hear if they care to come. If they care to ask questions. It, it would just be so, um, it, we don't even know if that's something that we could do. If we could do it through the select board with Larry Brant present and then obviously, as you know, the proposal has, um. Financial pieces that are in, attached to it that we can discuss at that time as well for the town. So it's just something that we're, you know.
We, we'd love to have you.
Yeah, okay, so we didn't, we didn't wanna, and, but the, the thing is your schedule's so tight and I just listened to you, so May second, if May ninth, I mean, I don't, you guys just lasted. You just did this meeting tonight, you're doing another one on the second. We'd need about a forty-five minutes to an hour.
What we have to do is confirm the availability of the building inspector.
Okay.
So what Rayanne and I talked about is confirming the availability.
I can check with Larry to see when he's available.
And we're real, obviously, we're the flexible ones, so. Obviously, we're the flexible ones, so whatever you guys have, we'd show up and just do, you know, we have four people that would come and would like to, like our, our hydrologist, our, um. No one from the DEP would come, it, it's not their thing, they don't come to public sessions, they, they kinda answer questions from behind, but, um, we did ask and, and, um.
LSP.
El- our LSP, and then, obviously, if you chose to take it to the next level, we would then, um, you know, provide payment for your LSP, cause that was part of the agreement originally. I don't even know where we, where that stands, that's, that's all, I just.
It's time for at least a, a, a plan to be.
We're ready, we have it all, we just kinda feel like, we've been back and forth and, and, I, I, I think Pat can attest, it just, it feels like we're not gonna, um. You know, there's, there's clearly a, a proposal to stop any type of a, a, action like this going in front of the, um, the, the, the town. There's one that says, well, we should bring it in, reg- regulate it, um, so, the feeling is clearly that, there's a, there's a board in town that we're not welcome at. And so we just, you know, it, it, it makes no sense to keep batting down that.
Okay, well, anyways, we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll probably make it an off, an off-cycle meeting, rather than doing it in a regular meeting, a special meeting.
Again, we're, we're the ones that are fluid, you guys.
If it takes forty-five minutes only, it's no way.
You, you agree then, so that's what they're telling me, that it's, they, you know, they, they're saying they need longer, they need longer, I'm like, the most you're gonna get at a May second town meeting is, is, you know, you guys are jammed, so I just, uh.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so then, if we go next to appointment and wage authorizations, first one we have is Memorial Day Committee, we have James Berthium.
I'll make a motion to appoint James Berthium to the Memorial Day Committee.
Second.
Discussion.
Out of favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the next one is the Town Administrator Appointment, it's for Audrey Brooks to become the Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector. It was, have to be temporary due to the town charter not allowing intern town administrators to make any permanent appointments. So this would just be a temporary appointment until the permanent town administrator is in place.
And this is a waiver of the fourteen day, or it's just an appointment?
It's just an appointment, but it has to be retroactive to, eh, April eleventh.
Okay, so I'll make an appointment, a temporary appointment for Audrey Brooks to be Assistant Treasurer Collector, re- retroactive to April eleventh.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Out of favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item is the budget review. I know in the past we've had several different versions, B's and, and C, this is now version D.
Do you have one for us?
I don't have one available, I can send one to you.
Since I learned how to use it, so.
A couple changes that were made, like I had mentioned before, is we've added back in the hours for the non-union employees at the FY sixteen pay rates.
Can we just hold up one second?
Which can you, on this street now?
Yeah, but if you can, if you look at the budget, if you go through the line items, you can see that it's kinda level funded going down as far as FY sixteen approved. And version D on the right-hand side. So any non-union employees?
You're not trying multiples, are you?
I'm not, I'm not. I think you just reduce size and add torners.
Actually, it would be easier if you just did this one, it's one side. Is it two-sided?
It's two-sided.
Colay?
Did you staple it?
No.
Sorry.
I gotta leave by eight forty, just say no.
Okay, well, I'm hoping we'll be done by then.
Me too.
So if you wanna continue while he's making those copies, so, non-union employees were brought up to their regular number of hours, just at the FY sixteen pay rate.
Where are we?
This is going through the, the detail, if you look at each, so if you look at Turk, the town clerk's salary, she's been brought back up to the FY sixteen thirty-six to sixty-four. Whereas before, she had had five hours cut in the B and C budget. And so that goes down through to we, all the non-union employees throughout the budget.
To level fund.
To level fund.
Where'd the money come from?
Uh, well, let me say what the other change, this big change is first, and then I'll get to that. The other change is that we, uh, restored fire and ambulance service to Sunday before in B and C budgets, that was taken out. And where it came from was several reasons, uh, that we were able to take it, was, uh, for Rutland Dispatch, for example, there was five thousand dollars that was listed twice. For that assessment, so that we had five thousand dollars there. We have three people that were taking family plan health insurance that are no longer taking those plans. And so that's a big savings right there. We reduced by five percent everyone's expenses, and so that's the additional savings as well, and then some came from free cash. And so, the surplus free cash is at forty-eight thousand one ninety.
What was that last time?
Uh, for the B budget, it was at about seventy, seventy-one.
The B budget, it was?
The B budget was seventy, seventy-one, the C budget that FinCom had requested, it was at one fifteen. Thanks. The problem we're, I mean, I'm confident with the free cash being low, because it's, uh, we are able to. We're trying to do incorporate best practices, and by doing that, it's kind of doing a, a number on our budget. However, we can explain the low number for free cash by saying we are incorporating these best practices, it's a one-time hit. And therefore, we were able to keep everybody level funded, we didn't have to cut any ambulance or fire services. So, it's something that will be more acceptable rather than cutting hours, cutting services and still having a number of free cash.
And you say acceptable to who?
To auditors and bond companies.
Okay.
And then going forward, it's not gonna be as big of a hit, as far as incorporating those best practices.
How much free cash is used?
Uh, it looks like we went from seventy-one to forty-eight.
Now, how much is used, that's how much is left?
That's how much is left.
So how much is used to fund the operating budget?
About thirty thousand, about twenty, twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand.
Wasn't that what it was before?
No, before in the B budget, it was at seventy-nine.
What was the C budget?
So now it's at forty-eight and C.
But that's the balance, I mean, how much is, how much is being used to fund the budget?
And then the other one was one fifty-eight. It's.
So I think if there was thirty there and then we're up near two hundred?
For, well, the capital cash allocation is one eighty-seven.
No, that's.
And that was one ninety-two with the cuts, so, it's a combination of using free cash, having cuts in both expenses. As well as some things that were listed twice.
Do you have a copy of the C budget?
No, cause I don't have a paper.
Thanks. And so if you'd like, I can list, I can make another, a different spreadsheet that shows you exactly. Where I've added the hours and where I've subtracted expenses, if you'd like to see that.
Yeah, could you do that?
Yeah, absolutely can.
Sixty-five.
All right, so here then, on version C, we had a, an operating budget subsidy of twenty, of nineteen grand. Now it's up to thirty?
Yes.
And the, the stabilization was sixty-five before, do you know what that is now, stabilization transfer?
That one, I'm gonna have to check.
Well, that isn't as good as the, the lower numbers preferable.
Well, the transfer to stabilization was always fifty-five up at the top.
What's the boards, you guys could carry on, uh, what's, you know, board's feeling on going from the previous version to the new version, which is with the, the major changes, which are getting the hours back up. As well as the Sunday fire and.
Well, if we continue to cut the hours like we are, we're gonna end up losing a lot of good employees, which we've worked several years to try to get in-house.
Yep.
So, you have a good team, they're all gonna go if we cut their hours as much as we were. You know, Sunday, public's, I mean, again, government's role is to provide public safety for people. And I think it's important to have public safety available on seven days a week, if we have them here, there's no point in having them six days and not seven days. I mean, it was just this past weekend that they had that, you know, extrication, a mile and a half into the wood, into the pits for the, for the one guy who flew him out from the center of town. So I mean, that's our public safety in action. What do you guys think? Just about, you know, specifically, I guess, about those two things, about the hours and then about public safety on Sundays.
I agree with Mike.
I, I agree with the hours, because some of them are minimal as it is.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna cut a part-time, part-time job, for some of these people, I mean, they're, they're, they're not gonna stay.
And, and, in addition to level funding, you know, so in, so no pay increase as well as reduction in hours, I just, it, it's just so hard to do.
And probably more work, cause if you get rid of their clerk.
Right.
You're adding that on too.
Basically, you're sending a message to them, you know.
Go find your job.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just, anyway, um.
Okay, so, I, I mean, certainly I can send that out to you, it doesn't have to be approved tonight, we can do it in May second meeting.
Yep.
Um, so if you can look at that listing, if you have any questions, send me out.
Sounds good.
Uh, we can do the same thing with the warrant on the May second if you'd like. The articles, you'd better push those out.
Are we gonna go through them or?
If you wanna go through them now, we can do that or.
Yeah, let's go through them. Now that we have the blank space, I think it's appropriate, you know, that we had the superintendent in here tonight.
Well, just in terms of your timing though, if you're gonna, if you're gonna wait until a May second meeting, how are you gonna get our recommendations?
Well, there probably won't be too many changes, and what I'll do is I'll send out the listing tomorrow, and if there's any concern, then if the budget's revised, I can send that out.
All right, I'm, I'm actually now talking about the warrant.
The warrant, we can wait till May second to approve.
I thought you needed this by the twenty-seventh.
I would like to have it done tonight, but if we have a time constraint, it may have to wait till May second.
All right.
We'll see how fast we can go through it.
Okay.
So the first five are basic, normal articles that are always presented. Article six, again, no changes from the last revision. Just wording, anything.
Well, they said it's, the last draft I had was, um, the three thirty-one version, where it said accountant will be supplying an updated chart, is there an updated chart?
I don't have an updated chart, I just.
Okay.
Article seven is to fund the local firefighters' union, which we took care of tonight, so there's no changes. Article eight, I still need to put in final numbers once the budget is accepted, same with article nine. The next article is for this senior center facility.
Are they pulling that?
I, I've talked to them, I think they're almost looking as though it's not gonna be on.
We are.
Town?
Yeah, I, I don't.
No, no, we had our last meeting, which I think you were, couldn't be a.
I think I am, you know, I can.
Anyway, yeah, our last meeting, um, we all decided that, again, we're not pulling the project, we're pulling rushing forward and putting on something like this, cause we, even though we have an excellent design, it's sort of just getting there. So, um, decided to push it off towards either closer to the September primary election or the general election in November. So that's where that stands.
So that one, that one's off?
That one is off, and the next one is the public safety complex.
That is also off.
Okay. The next article is the senior citizens work off tax abatement program.
And let me just add one thing to that, about the senior center, um, you know, I'm not speaking for all the seniors, but, um, they were on board with this as well. Cause they want this to go through and not feel like it's been pushed at people or rushed without a full plan, so, this is sort of a collective, um, a collec- collective effort.
Uh, the next one is the senior citizen work off tax abatement program for fifteen thousand.
Did we find out what the hourly rate was that the seniors are paid?
I don't believe we did, I'll go check on that. The next one is for the library, five thousand dollars to hire a consultant.
Where does that money come from?
This one looks like it's.
Is it an operating budget? Question, or, it is?
Yes. Yes, from available funds.
It wasn't on a line item, it's, it's, it's available funds, it should be.
Which is, which is free cash.
Free cash.
Which is our forty thousand dollars that's left, right?
No, it's already, the five thousand dollars is already in there.
No, 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 no.
It's already listed.
It is, that's what I'm.
Right, so this is, this is from, this is from.
Where it says free cash expenses.
On my three copies here, I have nothing, so.
Top page?
Oh, did I not?
I don't have a top page.
I, I didn't make you a top page.
Here we go again.
Here we go. Another ten minutes.
They're already accounted for, it's not coming out of free cash, that's the bottom line.
All right, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering.
Any issues with that one, does anybody have?
The, uh, library?
The five thousand for the library?
Nope, I don't.
Mike, I'll give her mine.
He's got it.
I got it first.
Thank you. Uh, the next one is the twenty thousand dollars from the Town Center Committee.
Right, this is the, yeah, this is schematic design for the Town Center Committee, this is, uh, if this is approved at town meeting, this, this, uh, consultant. Will be working with the Town Center Committee and directly with the WPI students to come up with this schematic design, so, um, you know, pretty important towards, uh, the plan that's currently, you know, being developed. For future Town Center redevelopment.
The next article is for ten thousand dollars for updating the town's nineteen eighty-eight master plan. I have a minor issue with this, because ten thousand dollars would probably only pay for reprinting it. A great master plan, or even a, a good master plan is about sixty thousand dollars.
I think I need to brought that up if not, the, her last meeting, saying it wouldn't be worth that, because you, what you just said, they'll just be reprinting the old one, so.
I mean, it might pay for phase one, but ten thousand dollars is just gonna get a reprint.
Oh, we can speak to it at town meeting.
Okay. The next article is for the seventy-five hundred for the fireworks, for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary committee.
Not enough.
I know. And the next one is the solar for Borrego Solar, which actually Jeff and, and the assessors and myself will be meeting on Wednesday, should do that agreement.
And good news, the net metering credits, um, were all increased, uh, from the state level, which many, many firms and municipalities and all that sort of stuff. Had been waiting for, and now that we've, we've got a few of these, I think it's good news for us.
And this next article, uh, addresses it well, the net metering credit purchases, so, that one's on there as well. This one is the stabilization account, transfers transferring balances to general stabilization account for the treasurer's software and the building needs study. Uh, the next one, there were just a couple of changes to the date of the votes were incorrect, cause of that meeting that we had, and then it was worded wrong, so we had to get the. I don't know if you remember that, but fifty people to get to revote, so, that's the only change for those blocks of numbers right there.
No, that says date of vote, rehab engine six four two oh one.
Which one are you looking at?
Uh. It's, it's, it looks like the last, the last.
Last digit.
Oh, okay, on mine, it's not, it's not gonna, so it's two thousand fourteen, I can just make that the fourteen or thirteen.
All right, just as long as it's on the final version.
All right, let me just change that to just here. The next line for the capital article tables, there is a change for the police department's administrative cruiser. Uh, Dennis has looked into getting an Impala instead of an SUV, and so that, instead of being twenty-nine thousand, it would be about twenty-five thousand.
Is this four-wheel drive?
It's not, and I asked him if that's gonna be an issue, and he keeps on assuring me it's not, that if he needs to go somewhere, he can use the other SUV. And he says it's okay.
And this is, this is to save money?
I didn't ask him to switch, I didn't ask him to switch cars, he volunteered this, he said the Impala is, is most likely a better car anyway.
Can you ask him why?
Okay.
Are we still okay with the F five fifty and?
I don't think we were okay with it before.
No. Not okay with it.
The five fifty?
Yeah.
Do you wanna remove that?
I think so.
I personally do.
I, I did before and I do again, I don't know what you guys think.
Yeah, I mean, they got a four fifty and a five fifty now.
I think this year specifically, you know, I mean, this is a tough year, I don't know, Jeff, what do you think?
No, probably not this year, yep.
All right.
Uh, any problems with the other ones listed? The other cruiser, the administrative cruiser, slade roof, or Route sixty-eight engineering bond, which you have to do, that's paying for final year.
Yeah. I don't know, do we, wanna get both those vehicles this year?
We asked Dennis which one's more important, just pick one of them.
See what he says.
Okay, I can pull them in, I know that it, I mean, it's not gonna save that entire amount, because then I'm gonna have to increase the vehicle maintenance.
Okay.
Do we need, but do we need administrative veh- vehicle?
Exactly. Ask him like the answer and see what.
But isn't this just in a, it's just sitting in our capital budget? This money. It's, it isn't going, it's not, it's not going anywhere else, it's just gonna, you're either gonna spend it on something that Dennis needs, or you're, or it's just gonna sit in the bank for another year.
But that's, we're not sure about priorities, where these necessarily fall out of all of those capital needs.
Also, if we're funding our operating budget with our bank account, we're gonna need something there next year too.
If that's, if that's what we're doing.
I can tell you Dennis is probably gonna. I can tell you Dennis is probably gonna say it's gonna be very hard for him to choose which one of these he's, he can cut.
Okay, well, if you just, um.
Uh, but I'll ask him.
Okay.
If you get rid of the seventy thousand dollars from the five fifty, it's a big chunk.
It is.
Right.
Just ask, we have to.
Okay. Alright, the next article is for the ambulance as well as the fire panel at the Center School.
We aren't gonna recommend the ambulance, because you have not decided what you're doing with the ambulance service.
We are. Okay, I, I'm for the ambulance.
Now, why, why are they combined again, the ambulance and the?
It's just a way that they want it.
The committee that, was it the capital and?
Capital plan.
They suggested doing it that way.
Can we split it up, or is it, that's from the capital committee?
That's the way they wanted, they wanted to.
Well, it's, capital committee makes a recommendation.
You can split them up if you'd like.
I mean, I think we should.
You can do whatever you want.
If we split it up, I think we should do the ambulance separate.
We did two separate items.
It's very, very, very separate.
What we thought was that, is that the, the ambulance would be separate and the other, uh, the alarm piece is twenty five grand.
Yeah.
And you can just pay for it out of the capital account.
Well, especially if we're not getting the five fifty.
Hmm.
Right.
Do you wanna remove the fire panel altogether?
No, they should be.
The fire panel?
Well, could we take the fire panel out of this and put it into the, in place of the five fifty?
Would be a just a line item, put it in your chart.
Yeah, you can.
That's a good idea.
Do we know why they put it together, put them together?
Put it together to get them both to pass.
Well, that's, that was why I asked the question, because it involves the school, the school, yeah.
That's when I, then, given you the answer, given you the answer.
But I think that would create more problems.
But that was before.
Since the ambulance got voted down last time by one vote, I figured that's probably what they're trying to do.
That was before the cap, that was be- before the capital committee and finance for that matter understood that there was no consensus on what to do with the ambulance service going forward. So it seemed to us that it's putting the cart ahead of the horse.
So what we just decided there is to take the twenty five thousand, put it into the capital.
Mm-hmm.
And then have a two hundred and fifty thousand for an ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
That is not supported by FinCom.
Mm-hmm.
But is supported by us, I'm, I'm for it.
Yes, yes, I'm for it, yep.
Okay, alright, I'll make that change. Uh, the next article will be with the fifty thousand dollars for, this is submitted by the community preservation committee, I don't know if you wanna review any of the articles that are not submitted by Board of Selectmen.
Can you give us any history on those?
These, I don't know, I'd have to ask the community preservation committee why they're putting these on.
Alright, I'll ask them.
Yeah, no, we can cruise through those, that's fine.
Okay. So the next one that, is for the Board of Selectmen would be the public education grant, the PEG access cable related fund.
Where are you?
Uh, on page nine, second article down.
Thank you. Thank you.
This creates a special re- revenue fund.
Yep.
Uh, the next one would be, and I still have to get the number for this, would be the tax title collection revolving fund for the treasure collector, so we can start, uh, collecting on those tax titles. The next one is for the temporary driveway permit for the D P W.
What happened to Mister, Mister Duggan, is that off?
Nope, it's further down.
Oh. I must have an old one.
Perhaps, so this one is for the temporary fees, it's just a revolving fee, he would pay things out of that that are related to the temporary driveways. It just, um, Amy says to ask for the, to have a special account for it.
Okay.
The next one is the, uh, Board of Health article for the kitchen inspector. Next one is a planning board, I don't know if you wanna review that one, next two are planning boards actually. And then you get to the citizen petitions, that are three, with respect to the earth removal and.
Did you hear anything from town council on those?
The earth removal have, I'm still waiting on the two and a half override article.
Okay.
And that's it.
So the only question we have is the, uh, question for the warrant for the school.
Right.
That, and she was saying it's two hundred and fifty three, it's gonna be more like two hundred and eighty seven, because we only budgeted six percent. And this is a thirteen point nine percent increase, so it's gonna be more about two hundred and eighty three thousand, would be the override.
I really don't think we should even put it on there.
I mean, we we've got, you know, a number of other issues that are gonna be difficult decisions, um. It just doesn't feel like it's, it's just gonna incite sort of rage against a lot of the other things that we need to, um, get done. Um, I don't know, I mean, people, it's for people to decide this sort of stuff, so I'm, we're just talking here, but, I don't know, what do you guys think about putting on a warrant article for an override?
I don't think it'll fly anyways.
Well, it's not gonna, yeah.
There's no way it's gonna fly in this town.
Right, but to, you know.
Yeah, I know what you mean, yeah.
But, but, but do we give the people the option of, cause we can't afford the three hundred thousand dollar increase in schools over what we've already, you know, the six percent we've already given them.
But then what happens next year?
Oh, no question.
Well, that's it, I mean, I've said to that before, if the, if an override would fix it, then great, I'll be the one out there calling signs, but it's.
It's a never ending.
Well, it's not, see, that's, that's what we're trying to get against, that's why we started talking about the task force stuff and the Collins Center, which is the, um, doing the study for district wide improvements to reduce, but still, the schedule that we received from them recently made it seem as though we mu- mu- might not even have a plan of attack until the following fiscal year, so it's, it's just such a long process, so I do think that that's coming eventually, I don't know how many years from now, but, uh, there's, you know, significant changes, uh.
Obviously, more than probably sixty or seventy percent of that budget is for special, special ed, right? I mean, the increase is mainly special ed, that's what she was saying.
And transportation, right, and special related transportation.
Yeah, so. And I mean, uh, obviously at this point, we can't control that, but at some point, the state's gonna have to, something's gonna have to give, cause all these towns can't really afford to carry all that.
Right, but as part of what we discussed at this task force as well, is there's a portion of the, the, the state, I think, that wants further regionalization of schools like ours. So to, to just keep expanding, you know, make it larger, so that, you know, more of that can be spread, it's not a fix, I don't think, but I think that inaction is on purpose sometimes.
Do you guys have any, any comments from anyone?
Well, it would seem to me that, um, in terms of positioning going forward, that choosing to not put it on the warrant is different from having a no vote, right?
Yes.
So, and in terms of positioning going forward, whether it goes on the warrant, or whether it does and there's a no vote, what happens next?
It goes to a one twelfth budget. So, they, they divide the number by twelve, it, it, it just, we did it a few years ago.
What number?
The, uh.
But last year's, last year's number.
What we, what we tell them, we can give them.
Okay, alright.
And this is, trust me, uh, some of this is semantic, because the other towns are, are worse off than us, a number of them, and four of us, out of the five have to vote for these overrides.
Oh, no, I, I, I understand that, but I'm only interested in this one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so if it, so if there's no consensus on the budget, at the, at the end of the town meeting season, with all five towns, um, you know, what has happened in the past is they've come back with a new number, towns that haven't approved the number, go back, they have, we have to call another town meeting, um, and vote on a new number, and that goes on for a while, and in that process, like Dan was saying, they use last year's budget and do one twelfth, so every, every month, you're paying one twelfth a month.
Mm-hmm. Right, right.
A couple of years ago, the commissioner came in and set the price, um, of, in October or November, it was late, you know, it was October, November, he set the price of, of what it's gonna be.
Mm-hmm. Where'd that come in relative to what you were paying?
Uh, us was, well, it was below what we're paying now, but.
In our.
No, but I mean, at that time, you were paying one twelfth, and was it?
We, we, we. We, we, we had approved over what, um, what they ended up actually doing, so we, we had approved over, but the, some of the other smaller towns approved less.
Mm-hmm.
And it was them that were forced to, no, they, they, they came in and approved the higher number.
And then they came in. Oh, they did.
So we were fine, and the other towns were forced to then get that number off.
Because the state came in, that's what you're at risk of, is, you know, we, we came out in our favor last time, that's the best way to put it, is in our favor, but you're, you're at risk as soon as it, you know, comes out of our hands, it's in state control, whatever they come with at that, you know, ultimate time.
Well, the, well, alright, but the, but in theory, then the worst it would come in at is what she has asked for.
There's no, there's no definite there, I can't confirm that.
Well, I, it would be hard pressed to imagine.
It, 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 it would be hard pressed to say that they were, that, that the commissioner would increase it above what they asked for.
You're right. Correct.
Yes, the worst would be that they came in.
Right.
And what we had talked about last time is that it's, it's certainly easier, you know, at that point, you would need an override. If they comes in three hundred thousand dollars more than, than we, we put in, I think it's an easier sell to people to certainly say, the state came in and said, we have to pay this, and if we don't pay it, this is what's gonna happen, and that's fine, if that's what everyone wants.
Mm-hmm. What does happen?
We'd have to take a massive cut to everything else, I mean, three hundred, you know, schools are what, sixty eight percent of our budget, so
Mm-hmm.
Three hundred thousand dollars of the rest is a, is a lot.
Alright, so the con, so the consequence is not something other than
Like Templeton.
Uh, than going in and taking an axe to your budget, there is not, there's not some further state oversight or this sort of thing that happens, okay.
Right, that's maybe the rest of our budget.
No. I mean, Templeton, last year, a couple of years ago, had to like shut down the D P W.
They shut everything down for like six months.
Shut down, so that's the sort of drastic.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But at that point, you can go to the town with an override and say, the state came in, this is the school budget, this is what we have left. These are our choices before us people, that we can either fund the school budget, or we can make cuts in the little bit remaining left.
And again, to Pat's point, we can fund the school budget this year, cause that's just one year.
One year, agreed, one year.
So, again, and that's why this task force started in the first place, is we asked for a five year projection, and we're still working on that, getting that, but, you know, you've heard some of the, um, discussions from tonight.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but it sounds like everything gets blown wide open with special ed anyway, so you can sit here and project out.
Well, that's why I asked that, that question, I sort of, the leading question.
But it's soft, yeah, but it's, it's soft.
And this year was one point seven five million was high, you know, I was trying to basically, you know, get them to say, well, is it, you know, is this a linear increase every year? Can you factor it into your projections, you know, into your, you know, so that you know it's coming, so it can't be a big surprise.
Yes, and I heard no.
Correct, uh, and I also heard that this was a massive year, so I don't know how many other, I'm not saying in this room, people care about the fact that this was a, a significant increase year for special ed specifically, but that's pretty much why we're here.
Well, it's, it's the same as Monty Tech, we got here with a hundred thousand dollar increase this year, we can't predict how many kids are gonna get accepted to Monty Tech, and good for them if they do go, but that's a variable number, some years it goes up, some years it goes down, some years we stay the same, we, we can't, we don't know how many kids are gonna go till they give us the, the bill.
Right.
So did you wanna decide tonight if you wanna?
I think we have to, I mean.
Have to what?
Decide tonight, we're not putting it on or no.
Right, which we'll, we'll have to, we'll just ultimately take a vote for that, um. Uh, right, I mean, we would probably need a vote.
You'd have to take a vote.
You'd have to vote to put it on.
So.
I mean, really, the two ways to think about it is we either just take a stand and say no, or we put it out to the voters, which I already know what the answer's gonna be, but put it out to the voters and let the people in town decide.
Right.
By putting it out to the voters, it wouldn't, in one sense, would be advantageous by getting the word out to the, the state of the schools.
It does.
Um, because at town meeting, at least you can simply say, folks, um, well, not necessarily, so, we're not supporting the two and, the two and a half, but this is what the reality is of the, uh, school, the, uh, pro, and.
And this is your decision.
And it's not gonna get any better, it's gonna get, you know, could potentially get worse, uh, co- co- consolidation, everything else. So I would think that'd be one advantage of having it on the, on a warrant, so that it could be discussed or presented to the town, so that they're, at least made aware that, hey, this isn't gonna go away, but, um, that would be my only feeling, that, that would be the one advantage I would think would have, uh, certainly, um, not in favor of it, I don't see the town who will ever go.
Me either, but I, I, there's a certain part of me that wants to have people make that decision for themselves, you know?
Yeah, let them know.
Um, but, you know, we have to vote on this, so I, I guess I'll take a motion in either direction, does anyone have one to make?
I'll make a motion to put the override on the warrant.
Putting it on, I'll second the motion.
Uh, any further discussion?
I mean, you know, the one thing with the school this year, every other year, they've used their reserve fund, and they don't have any res- significant reserve.
They have a reserve fund, but they decided not to use it, which is smart.
There's very little left, E and D, their excess and deficiencies fund is depleted. I, I, well, I, I, uh, any, any further discussion? No? Um, all those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, vote three to one? But.
Okay.
I mean, I'm certainly not, I'm certainly not for.
Motion carries. No, but I, me neither.
That can certainly be stated, I mean, in terms of, in the discussion part of it, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Can I make one quick comment about the operating budget, again, backing up, which I apologize, but, uh, this year, funding it is all well and good, and everything you guys said I would agree with, I wouldn't necessarily wanna say anything different, but it sets us up automatically for a hole for next year, now we're gonna go into next year's budget with a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar hole, and less of a reserve fund like the school is dealing with. Uh, so it's dangerous, that's all I wanna say.
Well, with the capital change that we made tonight, that will level it out a bit, also, we have different higher revenue projections for next year, so I'm not too concerned about it, I mean, if I had seen it and I thought that next year we would be even worse, I wouldn't have even considered it.
Well, we're also taking a major hit this year, and, uh, always that thing, and the.
Moving the capital debt into the budget.
One time thing, and that's.
But that'll be there next year too.
That's it.
It will, but fifty eight thousand of it is coming off next year.
Right, so ev- every year for the next couple of years, one of those things keeps coming off.
So we might have a hundred seventy five thousand dollar hole to.
This is the worst part of the year.
Right, but we are also gonna have revenue from solar projects, and, uh, the ambulance revenue, we might have seen increase in it, cause we, you guys up the rates for that, so.
But, okay, you know, so noted, and we're aware.
So due to time, if you don't wanna review the entire town administrative report?
Um.
There's just two items I need to review.
Why, why, why don't we just, why don't we just do that, and then that'll be it?
Okay.
That, I can give, um, committee reviews, uh, updates and whatnot, all that stuff next week.
Alright, I'll just go real quick.
And we can do minutes next week.
Then the, next meeting, the May second, will be your cable, charter cable license renewal negotiations, so Tom Cohen from Charter and Tom is from, uh, they'll be coming in for the cable advisory committee to meet with you and give you a short presentation. So that will be your next meeting, the bid was awarded to the, uh, Busy Bee out of Paxton for the Curtis Field basketball court.
I know, psyched. What was the bid amount?
Uh, it was seventy one thousand, they did have somebody that came in at seventy thousand, but because the gentleman had, well, Busy Bee kinda walked the line with them, told them what they could get rid of, in order to make the bid smaller.
Yeah. Yeah.
So they felt more comfortable with him, and it was because it was so close.
Yeah.
They chose to go with him.
He's swollen, I think.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah.
Right on the corner there.
It says, well, it says Paxton on all their documents, and so I just put Paxton. Uh, the five year financial forecast, Eric Kinship is coming in Thursday to meet with Kristen and I, again, to go over the, uh, financial forecast. We're hoping that for your May thirty first meeting, he'll have something from phase one for that, and also something to distribute at town meeting, and hopefully have it completed by the end of September.
Okay.
Uh, senior center public safety sign is up, as you've known.
Yes, it is.
And up today by D P W, uh, the next thing is.
One quick thing let me add to that, so just, is, the, the building committee's been in the papers a little bit, um, we, just so you guys know, I know I was gonna do an update, might as well. We, a few weeks ago, were, were surprised at the number that was given to us from our architect and owner, owners' project manager of a total ultimate cost of four point two million dollars for a senior center, whereas we thought it was two point something million dollars. So we basically all just said, absolutely not, you know, we can't support this, and went back to the drawing board. So it went from generally, um, way back down into the property, with a lot of site work and paving, blah, 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 at five thousand square feet, which is what we originally thought was gonna be affordable, to way back up towards sixty eight, a lot less site work, a lot less paving, a lot less parking and all that sort of stuff, at four thousand square feet. So, done, uh, yeah, detailed estimates and whatnot, and that brings us down to, you know, we've already, not including grant money received or town voted authorizations in the neighborhood of two point two million, so more in line with what the original plan was as far as total dollars to the town, so that's ultimately what everyone's gonna hear about. Okay?
Okay, the next thing is an authorization person, the town accountant needs authorization to approve the interim town administrator's assigned accounts payable vouchers, as well as payable vouchers. Uh, this will require a motion to approve authorization papers as presented.
You need a motion on that now?
I need a motion, and, and if once approved, I need a signature. I need a motion, and, and if once approved, I need a signature.
Okay, um.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, interim town administrator's assigned accounts payable.
Second it.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, and the, uh, uh, okay. The next item that would also need a, uh, motion is the community compact grant for the Quabon Regional School District Task Force.